Good morning and thank you for joining us this morning at our city council study session. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham, Lurick?
Yes, here.
Banker?
Here.
Mountfield?
Here.
Marsham?
Here.
Nichols?
Black?
Here. Thank you. We'll go ahead and jump into Agenda Item Number Two. It's Pocatello Regional Airport Commission Update. Representatives from the Pocatello Regional Airport Commission will discuss the commission's goals and projects as well as council's policies and expectations. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Alan Evans, Airport Director, Pocatello Regional Airport. And with me today, I have Molly Beceras, who is our Vice Chair of our Airport Commission. And just as a heads up, Molly does have another meeting a little later, so if we run a little late, we'll excuse her and I can answer any questions you may have or we can move forward that way. But I'll turn the time over to Molly to go ahead and start out.
It's nice to see Molly here.
Nice to see you guys.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you. Well, first, thank you for your service and what you do. And we appreciate you asking us to come today. Special thanks to Mr. Cheatham. Councilman Cheatham does always come to our meetings, is very helpful in assisting us and providing us support and guidance, so a special thanks to him. This year, we do have a few new commissioners who have been appointed to us in the last few months, and we welcome them and appreciate their service to us. So some goals and projects that we work on as a commission that I wanted to share with you today in this update. Our main responsibility of the commission is to assist the management in developing and putting together guidance for the airport based on our citizens' feedback. Really, our main focus is often reviewing and establishing the rental rate structure in the non-aviation property. I've been on this commission, I can't tell you how many years, probably five, I think, four or five, and this has always been a priority of ours. We got really, really close to getting that evaluation done, and then, of course, our property values increased, COVID came along, we had some other things that happened with property values and rental rates, and of course, businesses and brick and mortar at that time. So we're still working on settling those rates, finding something that is equitable and competitive to the area. So that's a big one for us. We continue to review the leases as they come up and different developments and provide those recommendations to you. Other responsibilities that we have and things that we work on, we also assist the management by reviewing and providing some feedback for our master plan. We have had a master plan for the airfield infrastructure, and we continue to provide Alan and his team guidance on that. Kristin Jensen, who is a commissioner of ours, also sets on the strategic plan advisory team with Bannock Development, and they're working on a strategic plan for the airport development at this time. So she serves in that capacity for us as well. The commission assists with other air force service development by being a voice in the airport and throughout the community. I think that's, you know, a really big role that we have serving on the commission. The commission works to support the airport and its assets to the community, providing over 184 million in annual economic impact and the necessary growth to develop our region. So that's kind of our roles, and that's our update. Thank you.
Council questions, by chance, questions?
Not a question, just a comment.
Okay.
Thank you for all you're doing, and I know the airport, you know, there were, it was difficult times during COVID, and so thanks for everything you do to keep us up and running and things going smoothly and all the work that you do. So appreciate that.
Thank you for that. We will continue to work, as Molly said, on establishing rates and making ourselves competitive with other airports and other property that's available in the community. So that's our big goal. It's been a real challenge, but I think we're making headway.
And your team does a magnificent job with the connections that they have in the other areas, reaching out and helping. So it's much appreciated.
Good.
Good things are happening. They're a little slow, but they're coming, so.
That's how it's always been. Yeah, I would agree. Thank you very much, Molly. Thank you for your time and everything you've done for the airport and for the city and Alan, the work you've done. You just went to a conference, Alan. Alan just went to a conference, reported to me yesterday. It was a very good conference, had some really good discussions with some airlines and stuff, and so appreciate your time that you've taken away to do that. It's an interesting time for airports and for airlines when you look at the commercial end of things, but one thing that's neat is the airport's a lot bigger and, bigger's wrong terminology, but there is a lot more to the airport than just commercial airlines and stuff. So thank you for focusing there. You've done a great job. Thank you. Hopefully, we can get you to your meeting now.
Yes, appreciate that.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Three, but before we do that, if you are here for the Agenda Item Four or Five, Police and Fire Union Quarterly Updates, neither union will be able to be here today, and so we have pulled those from the agenda. I was supposed to say that before the meeting started. Anyway, Agenda Item Three, Pocatello Development Authority Update. Representatives from the Pocatello Development Authority, PDA, will discuss the PDA's goals and projects as well as council's policies and expectations.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning.
Members of the council, good morning.
First and foremost, if I may, it is my pleasure to have the working relationship I do with Mr. Turner to my left, who has served as Vice Chair, and of course, everyone knows Mr. McLean, who on partly city support mechanism for what we do at PDA has been more than ample in his time and focus, and it's really been grateful on my part to be able to look to these two gentlemen for help and assistance in the process of looking over the PDA. Additionally, there's some folks back here from city staff that I have to acknowledge for their continued support, and I know amongst their other duties, carve out time to be not just supportive, but also friendly in our effort. So thank you. I appreciate it very much. That being said, I think we were marking this morning amongst us about how we would open any commentary to this meeting, and one of the sentences we came up was with us saying that "all is good in the land," if I'm correct.
Yeah.
I like it.
You use that in your next day of the city address.
I have a report tomorrow to the workers, because I'm gonna use that. I'm gonna say, "All is good in the land."
And as you can tell, I try to be as diplomatic as possible when it's called for, but other than that, we have fun doing what we're doing. And I think that the balance of the PDA Board, we are very grateful for, because their time, as you know, is volunteer time. And whether it's a phone call or an email or anything that's outside of the norm when we have our meetings, I have to tell you, the responsiveness is something I'm so grateful for. So, and I apologize, Mr. Mayor, I didn't recognize you this morning. Like I said, I hadn't seen you.
It's been a long time.
So if I could, with your permission, maybe turn this over to Brent to give us a quick walkthrough in terms of our project areas and what it is we are looking forward to, but certainly what we've been able to maintain to some degree during the course of the last year. So Brent, if you would mind?
Sure. Absolutely. So I provided each of you with a copy of our draft annual report. This is a document we have to create each year based on state statute, and this is going to go before the board next week for comment, and then it'll be adopted the following month with a public hearing process. But just to, you know, touch a few points on the executive summary, one of the biggest things, and I'm sure you all are very aware of the things happening out at the Naval Ordnance Plant, IRG purchased that property almost two years ago now, I think, and, but they have made significant improvements to those buildings out there. They've painted, upgraded windows, made major repairs to the exterior facades, and those funds were allocated at the time the TIF district for the Naval Ordnance Plants was established. That was one of the identified needs of that area. And so they've made significant investments beyond that as well that you don't see in their utility upgrades and other things, and they've been a wonderful partner, and you're going to see great things coming out of that area. They have a great vision for that whole arc, and so we're really grateful to have them there and working with them. So that's probably our biggest project and most visible thing that you might see already. In the North Gate District, we have seen some growth and some development happening up there. It's been slow, but it's been happening. The multifamily development from Karchner Homes is nearly finished. The Health Trust, the Portnif Health Trust has finished their north campus building. So they're starting to see things happening up there, and it's, there's a lot of excitement and things are starting to start to move up there a little bit. And the other thing that I wanted to touch on is we're looking, and, well, there's a couple of things. One is in the North Portnif District, which is, includes what most people know as the Hoku Site, we are currently looking at the feasibility and of adding a bridge over the rail line to connect River Parkway to Highway 30, which would be a huge connection, especially for freight traffic. All the trucks that currently come out of the malt plant and those facilities have to come down Craft Road, which is not ideal for anyone. To have that access directly to Highway 30 would be a huge deal. So we've been looking at the feasibility of that and the potential of adding that bridgeway. And the other thing we are, yeah?
Brent, in doing that, are we also considering a light where the bridge enters?
I would imagine, we haven't been in discussions with ITD on that yet. I would imagine that that would be a requirement. Otherwise, to have trucks come through and access Highway 30 there wouldn't be feasible. They do need to have that controlled access so they can maneuver onto Highway 30. That would be part of the feasibility study.
So is that just the service of malt plant? That's all that's back there right now, right?
And that Hoku Site, there's a lot of industrial type potential and-
But nothing's in there yet, correct?
There's stuff in there.
Oh, okay.
There is stuff in there. There's a number of different businesses in that location. Some of them do have some small amount of freight, but the intent is if that access, that's really what's holding that site back is the access. And particularly, emergency response access, you need two access points, and that would be a huge, huge component of that whole site and that whole area back in there.
It's pretty dangerous at the end of Craft Road to turn on the North Main also.
Yeah, that whole intersection is one of our most dangerous intersections in the city, so.
I could throw in too, the crossing over the railroad is dangerous, as is. When you have big trucks trying to get over, and that's the main line, and the railroad coming through there, it's not an ideal situation for anybody.
Yeah.
And we want to make sure it's safe.
Yeah.
The other thing we're working on is we're doing some feasibility studies for future TIF areas, potentially in the south part of town, looking at South Fifth, looking at, you know, the downtown area, just trying to get an idea of what makes sense, what doesn't, if it's an area that we should be looking at for future TIFs or not. And so we're engaging with some professional services to help us with that determination. And so we're really excited about the direction that PDA is going. There's a lot of good things happening. A lot of it may not be as visible that people see, but we're working hard to really push the development of these areas. That's all I have. I don't know if you have any further questions.
Couple of things I'd like to put out there. One is that fortunately, over the last year, we were able to establish a treasurer position.
Yeah.
And that has been an incredible upgrade for us, because now we have better financial reports, better financial accountability, and I think that has upgraded the PDA in many respects. Thane has been wonderful to have on board, so now we have a better time with that. Second thing is-
Who is that? Who is in that position?
Thane Sparks.
Oh, thanks.
He used to be with IF, working out of IF. He's worked with development up there. The second thing is, is we've all recognized, we had a work-study work session last year. As a mayor, as you know, we set a standard with Yellowstone TIF that the state looks at and says that those people down there did it right. That was a wonderful project. And we're now modeling our activities in regard to that so that we can achieve the same results that we did with Yellowstone. So that when someone asks a question, is there continuity and is there accountability? Yes, we have that. And that's what we're striving for this year, is to make sure that what Brent went over, the Naval Ordnance Plant, the airport, whatever, or any new TIFs that we might take under consideration will be addressed and handled, same as Yellowstone.
Good. Good. Any other comments? Any other council questions for PDA? I'll tell you, and this was, I had a meeting with David, the Chair, and Brent via Zoom while I was in Boise this last weekend, we were meeting with the attorney for the PDA. That meeting got over and everything, and I was talking to the attorney, and she says, "You need to know that the Pocatello Development Authority, the board, their foresights and things are hands down the best I've seen in the state." They're people, they're a diverse group, but they want what's best for the community, and they want to make sure they do it right. And so we were in good hands, and I just want you to know that I really appreciate your dedication, your desire to make sure we do things right, and it's not going unnoticed throughout the state.
Thank you for the shift.
It's great.
I do have just one question. I know we've talked a couple of times, and you mentioned as well, the exploration of a TIF district in South Fifth, or, you know, in downtown. Do we have any sort of a timeline on just, like, when we might see some information on that?
We're engaging the consultant, putting out an RFP right now.
Okay.
And so I imagine in the next year, we should have some feedback for you that we could present to you and give you as we have future.
And since you represent the city and the population, we want to let you know that we're also giving a lot of thought in educating the public of what it's all about, because there's a lot of misinformation out there and a lot of misunderstanding, not because of any other reason than no one's reached out to teach. And so we're planning on that too, because if you go downtown right now, you'll get all kinds of opinions and thoughts and questions, and you kind of think, no. But so we probably, as part of this process, we're talking about having open forums for the people who are in a projected district to come in and say, "Okay, what is it? We'll explain it. What do you think of it? We want to hear from them, what they think." It may be that the people in that district don't want one, and we have to respect that. So, but we also have to move with the credibility of being accurate. That's what we're hoping to do.
Thank you, Paul.
Linda?
I was gonna say something else, but I'll wait a second. I'm just really glad to hear you talk about some kind of education and outreach to the community, because I think there is just a lot of misunderstandings, or just, not necessarily misunderstandings, but people don't know about TIF districts and how they work and all the things the PDA does. And so I think, you know, helping our community understand that is a really good thing. So that's my first comment. And then my second one is congratulations to be the model for the state, I mean, the PDA in general, but specifically the Yellowstone TIF, to have one of our TIF districts be the model that they're using across the state is incredible. So, I mean, that's a real testament to the work that you're doing and that Pocatello is doing. So I think that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Super. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Agenda Item Four and Agenda Item Five have been pulled from the agenda, so we'll move to Agenda Item Six, Proposed February Fiscal Year 2023 Budget Amendments. Finance staff, are we've got finance staff in here? I know we're moving along faster than, oh, Gene's right there. I looked right past him twice. He's blending in. Let's see, Finance Staff will present, Finance Staff will present to council detailed information on proposed fiscal year 2023 February budget amendments for the public hearing to be held on February 16, 2023. Gene?
Good morning, Mayor and illustrious council members. Take me just a second to get organized here, apologize. Do you want me to read the whole thing or just go through the?
I think just go through them. If there's questions, then the councils can ask those questions. They've all seen the packet or had the opportunity to see the packet.
So Item Number One is General Fund One, the Mayor's Office is asking to get $5,592 from Fund 78. The department would like to use these funds to set aside, that have been set aside in Fund 78, to purchase the next request FOIA workflow software. Number Item Two, General Fund 001, Mayor's Office would like to take a $1,000 donation that was given from the League of Idaho Cities for the Youth Council Fentanyl Awareness Campaign. Please just interrupt me too as I go. That's all right.
Absolutely.
Number Three, General Fund 001, Mayor's Office would like to take the donation of $1,150 from Blue Cross of Idaho to the Mayor's Prescription Foundation Annual Mayor's Walk Challenge. These funds would be used to, for health and fitness programs throughout the community. General Fund 001, Police Department had $122,000 in Fund 78. The department would like to use these funds that were set aside to purchase vehicles and approved in fiscal year '22, but because the supply chain was not available, they'd like to move those funds, make them available to purchase vehicles this fiscal year. General, Number Five, General Fund 001, Police Department would like to take $10,000 that was set aside for fuel and animal control ordinance and move it into the Police Department for the officers, because the animal control was transferred to the Police Department. General Fund Number One, on Number Six, Fire Department has $1,271 as a grant. This grant was from the Idaho Fires Chief Association to purchase an iPad. Number Seven, Police Department would like to take $1,182 reimbursement. This is a reimbursement for the Portnif Medical Center for Case Staus's travel. Number Eight, Fire Department would like to take $5,000 from Fund 78 and AFG grant match, move the funds to 78 until the extension of the equipment can be purchased in January '23. Number Nine, General Fund, Fire Department, $48,632 from Fund One, AG Fund grants received in December of 2022 for extraction equipment. Fund Number One, excuse me, Number Ten, Fund One, Fire Department would like to take $120,719 from Fund 78, AG Grant funds moved to Fund 78 until the wildfire engine brush trucks can be purchased in February of 2023. Number Eleven, Fire Department would like to take $49,846 from Fund 78. This is required to match funds for the brush trucks. That was moved into Fund 78 at the end of fiscal year '22. Number Twelve, Fire Department, $341,131 from Fund 78, ICCU donation to match funds, move to Fund 78 until the wildfire brush trucks become available in February. Number Thirteen, Fire Department would like to take $25,000 from Fund 78, funds which were set aside to purchase of fire prevention vehicle at the end of fiscal year '22. Fund Number Three, Street would like to move $227,402 from Fund 77, out of Fund 77, which was set aside for capital purchase and move it into Fund Three as reserves. Number Fifteen, 004, Parks Department Recreation Fund, $78,917 fund balance. The department would like to use these funds set aside to finish and resurface the Ross Park pool. Number Sixteen, Fund Five, Cemetery Funds for the Brady Chapel, $65,000. Fund Nine, 62, the department would like to use these funds set aside for the facade fund for restoring the project at the Brady Chapel. Take a break. Don't know how you do it, Mayor. Now, let's see. Fund 779, Transit Urban Fund for $724,744 grant match. The department would like to use these funds from the FTA 5307 match fund from the CDB grant for the urban ADA sidewalk program. Number Eighteen, 009, Transit Urban Fund, $431,000 grant. The department would like to use this grant for the FTA Cares and FTA ARPA funds for the urban transit coach purchase. Fund Nine, or, excuse me, Number Nineteen, Fund Nine, Transit Urban Fund, $575,000 grants advertising revenue. The department would like to use these grant funds from the FTA 5339 Small Urban Capital Grant and PRT Urban Advertising Revenue for the purchase of two cutaway buses. Number Twenty, Fund 008, Transit Rural Fund, $525,000 grants, funds in balance. The department would like to use these funds for the FTA F339 Small Urban Capital Grant and PRT Rural Revenue for purchasing two cutaway buses. Number Twenty-One, Fund Thirty-One, Water has $16,140 fund balance during the budget preparation for fiscal year '23. Administration fees of water debt service was not increased, creating a deficit. We need these funds to cover that deficit to make the budget whole. Fund 032, WPC, $465,000 fund balance. The department would like to use these funds that were set aside to purchase a 2022 Kenworth T88T combo truck in fiscal year '23, but not available to purchase due to supply chain issues. Fund 050, Information Technology, $8,000 grant. The department would like to use these grant funds for the SUGA, that is, their fund balance from the Central Square Training for IT, HR, and the Finance Department. Fund 53, Employee Wellness Fund, $18,344 refund. Due to the overpayment from Blue Cross of Idaho, the Employee Wellness Fund would like to approve, the approval to use these funds towards the health and wellness program for employees.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and maybe this is a question for HR. Can, why did we get, why did we get the refund? How does that function exactly, and where did that money come from?
No, there's a bunch of department heads. I'm the only one you're calling up here. Heather Buchanan, Human Resources Director. So normally, when finance reconciles our benefits, which we do after every payroll, sometimes there's errors in the reconciliation. If someone comes on insurance and someone drops off, there's a shift in premiums. Occasionally, we will miss a shift in premiums, and at the end of the year, we do a full reconciliation, and Blue Cross refunds anything that we have overpaid.
Got it. So this is more kind of an accounting cleanup than it is-
It is.
-a rate, any sort of rate changes, like-
Sadly, this is not a rate decrease.
Right, and I didn't think rate decrease, but I wasn't sure if it was related more to like-
No, I would have had a PowerPoint with a little dancing man.
I was real confused.
You would have had a percentage number for us to memorize.
I would have had a percentage number to y'all memorize.
All right, perfect.
No, this is just accounting.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Fund Seventy, Street, Federal Aid Fund for $75,000 fund balance. The Street Department would like to use these funds to complete the Clark Street ADA Improvement Project. Finally, Number Twenty-Six, Fund Seventy-One- 26, Fund 71, Alternative Transportation Fund of $220,000, fund out of Fund 78. Would like to use these funds to start up for the alternative, and I think that's Fund 70, yeah, 78, for the startup of the Alternative Transportation Fund. The first project out of the fund will be the sidewalk curb and gutter for Center Street. This fund will be used for future alternative transportation projects. The total sum, the total change was $4,221,709 and it's broken out in the packet. If you have any questions?
I have a question about the last, what's that alternate transportation referring to?
Yes, yeah.
You're not alone. Yeah.
See, Heather, you jinxed me.
Good morning, Mayor and councilmember Jeff Mansfield, Public Works Director. So the $220,000 was budgeted for in the FY23 budget. It was put into Fund 78 because we didn't really have a fund where we could put it to do these sidewalk ADA type projects. And so we got together with Finance and we created this Fund 71, which would move that money and just kind of keep it in that fund and available for pedestrian walkways, bike paths, sidewalks, just anything really that's not specifically related to the roadway.
Okay.
So, yeah, as we get, as we apply for grants and things like that, we want to have a fund where we have some money available for our match and different things.
And we have a few items on this list that are related to sidewalk program in general. Is that last one, is it a specific area or location?
Yeah. So the last one is specifically designated for, the $220,000 is for the Center Street project, which we anticipate doing this next year. We did Clark Street this year, and that's the one related back to number, I think, number 25. So that, the 25 was to wrap up the Clark Street project. But then 26, the first project that we'll do out of this new Fund 71 will be Center Street. And that'll provide connectivity all the way from 18th Cleardown to Pocatello Avenue on one side of the road. So it'll prove that.
Great to hear. Thank you.
I think that project, if I recall correctly, has a 25% match on that one. So we'll get reimbursed 75% of that $220,000.
Great. Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions while Jeff's there?
Just on, are we locked in on these cars and fire trucks and everything? I mean, the majority of the money that's getting moved is getting moved because we can't get anything delivered. Do we know if we're getting stuff delivered?
On the fire, I'll ask Ryan on that.
Okay.
If that's all right.
No, yeah, yeah.
You know, they're all coming.
Right.
I want to hear from all of them. Here's a guy that's holding it up right here.
Morning. Tom Kirkman, Deputy Public Works Director. So the majority, I believe the majority of these cars have been delivered. They just weren't delivered within the 22. So we are seeing cars getting delivered, just they're taking a long time. So these are vehicles that had been ordered that we were waiting for delivery and it crossed over fiscal years.
Most, yeah, most of them were budgeted last year and we saved the money. We just need to move the money.
Just need the authority to spend it this year.
Sure. They're not completely filled though. The orders aren't completely filled.
Yeah, I was checking with Teresa. I don't think all of them are completely filled, but they're scheduled to be filled in 23.
So is it getting better, I guess, is my question? I mean, we're battling with everything we order here.
No, it's not. You'll see coming up on a council meeting that prices are, they won't hold a price for more than six months on most things.
But they won't build us a vehicle until after that six months is up.
And so you have to.
Takes two years to get the vehicle, but they hold the price for six months.
Well, but it's even worse than that. You actually have to say you want to buy it. So they put you in a line, even though you don't know what it's going to cost. So if you wait till the cost numbers come out, you've, you're way in the back of the line.
Well, and what's worrisome also is, is the way it's, it's been going is you get in line, you get the car ordered with the cost that it's going to be, and then all of a sudden, they decide they're not going to deliver that car to you. They kick you out of line before you get the car. It goes to someone else or the vehicle.
We just, we just had this issue with Levi at WPC. He ordered a, we ordered with him a Dodge truck. It's been like a year and a half ago. And they came in and just said, we don't have it. Sorry. And we just got.
And then you lose your place?
We just lost the whole truck. They oversold it.
Lose the truck, lose the place, lose everything.
But you're starting over, basically.
Is that on, is it a state bid or?
So that's one thing.
I know we, I know we save a little bit of money that way, right? We certainly save some money, but maybe it's coming down to, we're going back to local dealers and that we, now we're talking to somebody, right? Somebody that's got a little bit in the game and we're probably paying a little bit more money, but heck, right now, we don't know what we're paying. So I guess what I would ask is, and I'm sure you are, because you're always ahead of me two steps, we're looking at other alternatives for vehicle purchases.
Yeah, we've, we've talked about coming and speaking with you at a study session down the road about options we have. Unfortunately, the, the used car market, you know, if we wanted to go get one off the lot, they're usually leather seats and, you know, so we're paying a bunch for stuff we don't need. And it's a couple of years old and it's actually a little, you know, a little more than the brand new one. So we just got to figure out if that's a, you know, an option. And then to go to the dealers locally, for the work vehicles that we get, they're kind of at the same mercy as the state contract. It's actually a little worse for the local dealers because the allocations go to the state contract first and then the dealers get what's left over. So it's tough. It's tough right now.
Thank you.
So we may have to get in, and that's entirely up to you folks, where we have to have like a window on vehicles now. Because General Motors is really good at this. They'll say, okay, we're going to order vehicles in January. And so we get all of our ducks in a row so we can get ready. And then they'll call and say on December 3, you got today to order. And I know the mayor and I have had that discussion many times. It's like, this is our only chance. We can't get to council. And, you know, we've had to pass on some of those and it's just tough.
So in our fleet of vehicles, about how many vehicles would you estimate are at their shelf life where it's like they're about to kick the bucket anytime?
I think we, probably a third are already past it. And then another third's approaching it. We have, we have an aging fleet. The national average is like a 10 to 12 year fleet and I think we're a 14 to 16 year fleet.
I think we've talked about it before, but do we have a process for how we're looking at replenishing our fleet of vehicles? Or is it just like when it comes due, then we order? Are we ahead of the, the process?
Yeah. So we've, we've kind of put that together with departments, like their capital replacement plans, but we just haven't got to the whole holistic approach. That's why last year, I think you saw in there, we wanted to, it was like $400,000 a year or something to start these, this process going. And so we've got the outline for it. It's just, comes down to the money part and, you know, if we want to commit to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. And then fire trucks. Hopefully we see them soon.
Good morning, Mayor and council. Ryan Hearn, Fire Chief. Very happy to report on the Wildland Engines that we are going to Boise next week on Thursday and Friday to take delivery of those vehicles.
I'm just going to say, don't believe him.
They've actually sent us proof of life.
It is. Okay. He's told me since last summer, well, we're supposed to get them in June. Well, we're supposed to get them in then. Now we're supposed to get, so.
The original delivery on these vehicles was supposed to be May of 2022.
So once you have those, you're good to go, right?
Uh, yeah, we still have one that we brought before you last week that we're going to try for another grant, but I would say that our fleet is going to be.
But we don't know how long that'll take to get that one, right?
No, we won't know even on the award for that until probably the end of 2023. So we're just looking down the road. We have one brush truck that still would be something that's usable, but is approaching shelf life. So we're trying to forecast in the future. But these three engines that we're taking delivery of are going to be very good for the community.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Other, other questions, council? So we have a public hearing on the 16th. A notice has gone out and then a notice will go out again. So we'll have the, the two notices and on, on the February 16, we'll have the public hearing. Is that correct?
That's correct. Thank you, Mayor and council.
Yep. Thank you. Okay, then we will move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Fuel Site Project Update. Tom Kirkman, Deputy Public Works Director, will give a presentation and seek council's direction regarding the new fuel site project.
Good morning again, Tom Kirkman, Deputy Public Works Director. I've got Teresa Codell, our fleet manager. She's been managing this project. I never want to build a fuel site again. I'll just say that. There's so much more to it than I ever thought. So we just wanted to give you an update and some of the issues that, that we're running into. So we, we secured a site, right? We're doing it at the Public Works Annex. In fact, you want to handle that? We've secured the site at our new facility on 2405 Garrett Way. It was included in the, in the purchase of the facility. So the land was not, was not an issue.
Thank you.
What we're, what we've been seeing for the last five to seven years is our fuel site is aging horribly. Most fuel sites like need to be replaced in the late 20-year period and they have to be replaced in 30 years. That's when all the warranties go and there's no parts available anymore. And I think we're at year 33, unfortunately, on ours. So the cost of repairs is getting exorbitant and the, the manner that which the old fuel site was built is not conducive to easy repairs. They're, the tanks are basically encased in concrete. It's slag, that old slag. And so when we have a crack in a tank and we need to go in and repair it, we kind of have to be like archaeologists and just chip with, because you do more damage to the fiberglass tank trying to remove that material from it. So it's getting more and more difficult. I think five years ago, we'd have one repair year. And now it's like every month we're having them now. It's just, it's just, it's time. So we, we searched out an architect. We got a CMGC, a general contractor on, on working for us. Got a copy of the, of the overhead just to show you there. That's kind of the lay of the land. It's really just kind of a bare bones, bare bones deal. There will be four tanks, underground tanks. The nice thing about this is we're going to have double redundancy on everything. Currently, our fuels, our fuel site has two diesel tanks and one unleaded tank. And so now when we have an issue with the unleaded tank, we have to shut that whole tank down and then everybody's got to go to the gas station and, and use their P cards. And the biggest problem with that is we're very fortunate that we bid bulk fuels. And so just to give you an idea, we save about 66 cents a gallon on unleaded from what you could get at the pump and a dollar we average of on diesel. So this fuel site is very important for us. You know, we, we save about $300,000 a year over what we would do if we had to go to get fuel cards and go to the gas station. So here comes the fun part. We opened bids a couple, a month ago and our projections were 800,000 is what we'd need from the street reserves. And we didn't put on here, we were, there was an additional 200,000 that was going to be supplied by street and sanitation because part of this project's going to improve, improve the parking area for the department. So those departments were actually going to contribute some to. We opened bids and it's just under 2.3 million now. So it, it, two and a half times. The biggest issue that, that has gone is the tanks and all, basically all the fuel apparatus. The dispensers, the plumbing, the tanks have tripled. The site work has tripled. We actually cut a portion of the project out. We had another section that we were going to dig out, reclaim, repave. And the bids came up about three times as much as we could just do it ourselves. So the earthwork and the paving has tripled. The electrical, I believe, has doubled. And so here we are. And I think we're at this stage where unfortunately, this is where we're at. We're kind of at the mercy of this price. We were hoping when we set these initial prices out, I think it was two years ago, we were on board and then magic COVID, the however many words, five letter word we all, and the supplier says, we're not taking tank orders for two years, 24 months out. And so we were just at the mercy of waiting. So they couldn't give us price. They couldn't tell us when we could get them. We would, at that point, we would have had to purchase them without knowing exactly what we needed. One of the features we're putting into this fuel site is diesel exhaust fluid at the pump. Right now, every department kind of has to manage that themselves and it's a nuisance. They go to the fuel site we have and they get diesel and then they got to go back to their shop and add DEF, you know, and we're not able to track it real well. So we're putting actual DEF pumps at this, at this. So that's going to help that streamline that process. But unfortunately, I think we're at this point that we got to kind of do what we got to do. The biggest, the biggest issue is, Street Department was going to fund the fuel site and buy our highway user dollars from the state and Vanna County Road and Bridge. We have to report, our road report that I've brought before you, we have to report where every dollar went and it has to be used in the right of way. And if it's not used in the right of way, it has to be paid back. So we've, we've discussed with the, with the people at the state, we've discussed it with legal, and this is well within the purview of the Street Department funding this, but there will have to be a payback over time. And so we had some payback options that we put up. The 10 to 20 year one, I don't think is really an option. That would increase, we'd have to pay 80 cents a gallon for the next 30 years more to pay, or 10 years more to pay that back. So we have 2.4 million over 10 years. And then with the amount of gallons we used, we figured out that's about what that payback could be. For 20 years, it's 40 and for 30, it's 27. We didn't put the 30 on there. But I would recommend the 27 if we want to use street funds, the 27 cents over 30 years. Our, our, our gap over the pump is 66 cents for unleaded and a dollar for diesel. So for this year, you know, it's not going to be a big lift. But if gas prices go crazy in the next years, that could be a difficult, you know, that 27 cents could, you know, come up to haunt us. But I think that's, that's a direction we need to go. Street Department has a very large reserve amount right now. And I, we are willing to do that if that's the direction we want to go. But it will impact all of the departments that buy fuel by 27 cents more a gallon. But it's still 30 cents, 40 cents cheaper than the pump.
So, Tom, the, you say that all the departments, it impacts all the departments that buy fuel. PRT has their own fuel site.
Correct.
Which is new, but we probably need to be, Skylar's right over there, paying attention to that because as Councilmember Marshand, I think, brought up, we need to be thinking of replacement. PRT, we've had that building for seven, eight years, something like that. So we've got 22 years left on its fuel site before we've got to replace it. So we've got something there. WPC has their own fuel site. How old is that?
I'm not sure.
Levi, do you have any idea?
It's about 15 years old.
So we've got 15 years there that we're going to have to replace a new one?
Yep.
Where else has their own fuel site?
I'm not sure where airport gets their fuel, but I think that's about everybody. So I think they have a couple above ground tanks out there. It was.
Parks has an above ground tank somewhere too.
Where?
Parks, I think.
Parks had, John, Parks has a fuel tank somewhere?
Does cemetery still have their above ground tanks?
Not to my knowledge.
It would probably be a very small tank anyway.
So, so if, does it differ if it's above ground or below ground?
Above grounds are a little cheaper, not a lot, but they take up real estate. And because you have to have buffer zones, as Skylar's aware, you got to have delineated areas. It just takes up a lot of room.
I see.
But it does cut costs, but I don't think it's worth losing the real estate, in my opinion.
But I guess I'm just saying that's something for other departments. But I guess I'm just saying that's something for other departments to keep in mind is, I mean, we're, we're seeing the brutal realities. We went from 800,000, you know, a year or two ago to 2.4 million.
Yeah, and, and we were leaning hard on these guys. Our, our, our general contractor is pretty good. He was, and that's just where they came unfortunately. You'll also see on the next, sorry.
Go ahead.
On the next bullet, at some point, we need to start thinking about the next one.
Okay, Councilmember Marshand had a question.
My question, I mean, I know the buses probably have fuel for convenience. WPC, it's all, it's convenience, right?
Well, I think, I think PRT is, is federally funded and they have to have it there. They can't mix.
Well, I guess my question is, is, is these things go bad, can we move them to this fuel site? I mean, instead of replacing this one, if we're putting all our money here, right? We're building this thing and I know, I know it's, I know it's not convenient, but looking at the future.
So I think that, I think that, and Skylar, I need your help here, PRT can't mix. So PRT will have to deal with PRT separately because it's federally funded.
So does somebody, does some, do we fund that whole fuel site? Or are we getting money from the federal government?
I think it's a 2080 split. Federal government does some and then the, the.
City does the rest.
Correct. Skylar, BB, Public Transit Director, so that would be considered capital for us, which is 80% funded by Federal Transit Administration.
Perfect.
But your point to like PR, or Waste, WPC?
Also a tough run. I mean, it's not, it's not close. It's closer than it was, right?
It's.
It's closer than it was. I just, I'm just looking at, right? Do we?
Definitely a convenience thing, yeah.
If we're putting our money here and doing this thing right, we probably ought to be using it in, in the future versus looking at, you know, I have to put another million out here in this one or, or somewhere. I don't know that it works, I'm just.
And so just to kind of give you an idea, we, we use about 350,000 gallons a year, so.
That's from this site?
Our site.
How many do we know the gallons used at, at WPC?
No, they manage their own, so I wouldn't.
Levi, do you have any idea the gallon? I'm putting Levi on the spot. I've been trying to get him up here and finally he's making.
Everybody.
He's not big enough to hide behind.
Levi Adams, the Superintendent at WPC. It all depends. I think one of the biggest problems that we would have is when we're doing our biosolids application, is taking those trucks. And I know it's only 20 minutes to half an hour all the way into town to then fuel up, to come back and when you're doing that, two to three times a day with those trucks that are running 24 hours a day. That's one of the biggest reasons that we have our fuel site out there. Our tanks are smaller, they're above ground, they're 2,000 gallons apiece between unleaded and diesel. When we're hauling, we fill up those diesel tanks two to three times a week. I mean, we're running through that much diesel fuel. But in the summer and stuff, you know, we're probably 2,000 a month on diesel and maybe 1,000 on unleaded. So it's not a lot, but it's just that those times of the year when it, we need it, we kind of need it.
So we're above, above-ground tanks there, so we're not talking about?
No. And they're in good shape and they're, they're a lot easier to inspect and take care of. I mean, obviously they're saying that the double lines, you're able to see, we have all the leak detection and everything that we need to have. They're in really good shape and we're able to take care of them and inspect them. It's a lot, lot easier situation than what Tom has.
Okay.
And I think he's, you've got another 15 or 20 left.
I think so, yeah. We're in pretty good shape.
And you're not, I mean, they're already there, so the real estate is already allocated and being used. It's not proposing taking any new real estate for, because you said that's one of the main concerns with those.
You know, and again, it's funding, we can plan ahead and we can, and then use the rates to be able to, to either fix or replace the, the fuel stations that we have as well.
Well, and, and the plant itself is growing, it seems like, all the time. And so that real estate may be needed for something else, but.
Yeah.
But there again, that's, you're probably, a rate study does help.
And we'll keep planning ahead like that. If we need to, and maybe we just help upgrade at the airport, because that's where a lot of the, our farmlands at the airport, maybe we align with Allen for the diesel side of things, if that helps or, you know, there's, there's lots of different options that we can always plan ahead. If we're getting close to the lifecycle on those tanks.
Those are the things we need to look at.
Yeah.
And I guess my other question quickly, Tom, is.
Levi, stay there for a minute.
27 cents a gallon, that's going to affect some departments more than others, right? Police departments 24 hours a day.
So we use. Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, just.
So we, we use about 116,000 gallons a year of unleaded and 235,000 gallons a year of diesel. And so we have a way bigger savings with diesel, of course. Like we, we don't have to pay one of the taxes because we're a government agency and, but yes, it, it, the gap, the delta between what we pay at the pump and what unleaded is for patrol cars, that delta is going to change and it will increase their budget.
So which departments are going to use this fuel station?
So.
Which ones won't?
Everybody but.
Which ones won't use it?
Yeah, so PRT, WPC and the airport.
Entret.
Entret, yeah.
PRT uses it.
Entret, yeah.
So three departments out of all of them.
Yeah.
So this is used by all the vehicles at City Hall, all the parks and rec, all the water department, street department, sanitation department.
Fire?
Fire, yep. Police, so. A lot, a lot of people.
Josh had a question.
The current surcharges that you have listed up there, those are already being applied and calculated in those rates?
Yep.
So that 66 cent savings already includes that.
Yes.
All right, and then I, I'll have a follow-up question after we get to the next slide.
Do you have a, I thought you might have a question for Levi, so I asked him to say. Thank you.
Apologies, no, 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 mine is for Tom, I'm sorry.
Wait, Levi, no.
No.
So the thought of consolidation minus public transit, the, the thought of consolidation is probably a no-go at the moment, right?
Well, I think their assets are still in good working condition.
So eventually though, because WPC, they've got their own and from what it sounds like with what Levi was saying, it's probably best that they retain their own. But at some point, consolidation is probably something we should look at. So is there an idea or a thought on expansion on this plan that you've just given us?
Yeah, so we've, we've actually designed this for 30 years with like a 25% buffer for growth. So the tanks are capable of holding, we think, for the duration of 30 years. That's what we designed off of those.
So at some point, if we're looking at consolidation, would we need to add more tanks?
I don't think so on, like Levi was just saying, they don't really burn a lot of fuel because a lot of their fuel is generated at the plant. You know, so it's not, they're not, they're not driving long ways, they're just driving short ways a lot. You know, and so it's, I don't think they burn that much. I mean, he was saying, you know, 3,000 a month on their heaviest years and it probably dips down into two, I would imagine, on the light years. So we definitely have capacity to handle that. The airport, I think that one's kind of unfeasible. Their snowplows would never make it through town. And then I think the, with PRT, it's just, it's too cloudy there. I think it's best separated out.
So now, Tom, you had mentioned a certain amount of the work us doing ourselves. Percentage-wise, how much of the work can we do ourselves? And do you think that's a savings for us or is it just let somebody else come in and?
Yeah, so that was a, a big internal debate I had at the beginning. We've tried to shift the street department into more of maintenance and not doing projects. Because every time we're doing a project, we're not treating the roads and we get behind. So we decided we were going to bid this whole thing out. There was another section though of parking lot expansion that could have happened, but like I said, it was three times as much as we could do that for. And so we don't, we decided that we could hold off on that project for a while. And then that's a discussion for another day of whether, you know, if we have a, you know, a late fall or an early spring, we could knock that out ourselves. But we, we really try as a city not to compete with the private market. So that's one of the big things.
So my last question, kind of to Marshand's point and something you had just brought up is streets going more to maintenance than project. Do we have an idea on annual cost for maintenance for this facility? Like would it cost us more to maintain it than it?
Yeah, right now, I think we're, our admin fees are, I can't remember what the dealt, or what the total is, but it's about 50 or 60 grand a year for admin. Because on this slide, it, it says the 39, but I think there's also a, like we put 40 grand aside for repairs as well. And so.
Okay.
I don't have a great number for you on that.
No, no worries.
Just one more, Tom. Have you talked, have you been able to discuss this with the other department heads in regards to cost, right? And, and how they're going to look at their, their budget? Are they just going to say, I need another million dollars on my budget or what can I absorb, right? Because it's going to be, of course, every year's a tough year. But have you been able to talk to them and go, look, if we go 27 cents a gallon, this is what it's going to cost you, Parks and Rec, around there? How, how do you, can you do that? Are you just going to ask for the extra money or? So they can kind of plan, right? I guess is what I'm asking.
Yeah, and Teresa has just prepared all those numbers because we're, we're right in the middle of trying to figure out what diesel prices are going to be for 24. We just wanted to come and talk to you folks before we talk to the departments. Because, you know, we may say, well, we'll take our chances and we'll just ride this thing out till it completely falls apart. We just didn't know what direction you folks wanted to go. And so what we thought is after this, we get some closure on this, then that's when we start talking. But Teresa's already prepared what this impact would be to departments on a spreadsheet. So those conversations will happen.
Good. I'd really like to see the impact to each department.
So we did a, a quick rough calculation and we save about a $311,000 a year at the pump. And with the surcharge, that changes to 217,000 a year. So it's probably around 100,000.
Is that, is that at the 27 cents rate?
Yes.
Do you have it calculated for the other rates?
Which rates?
The, you said at the 20-year rate is 40 cents a gallon?
Yeah, we didn't, no.
You didn't, okay. Just wanted to check.
The 80 and the 40 cents, I just thought was way too big of a bite to take.
Okay.
So what we're seeing is it's going to affect the, the whole fuel fund by 100,000 a year. So it's not millions, it's, you know, it's 27 cents with the amount of gallons we use comes out to about 100 grand difference.
So, so I'm just looking ahead of, of what you really need to get the calculations that Councilmember Mangum would like is, are we thinking council, are you thinking 10 years, 20 years or 30-year payback for that? We need to, need to give them a little bit of direction there. It sounds, you have the money that we can do it out of streets right now. It's, so it's, it's a matter of, of that, years of payback. When will we have the, the, that, this contract in front of the city council? You've got to put it out to formal bid or?
Already done all that. We'll have to bring the contract for the price back. So we've already, we've already, when we, when you folks approved the contract for the general contractor, construction manager, then he handled all the bidding. And now that he's had, handled all the bidding, he compiles that, puts a project amount, which is the little under 2.4 million. And then that's when we come back to say, we need you to sign this contract for that price.
So, so the, the decisions, the council, you need from the council today? Timeline of reimbursement to the street department?
Yep.
And do or don't do this project right now, really?
And to add another pink in the works, we've got suppliers on hold and their, their numbers are only good for 60 days because.
You've got to get better suppliers.
So does everybody in the country. So Corey, you have a question?
So I'd, so we're looking at 10 to 20 years, 10 or 20 years. I'd like to see numbers for both personally, just so we can kind of have an educated understanding of what the numbers look like between the two.
I can send that. Do you have it?
Outside of that, I mean, it's really about it.
Do you want 30 years or you, Councilor, you guys?
27 cents is 30 years, right?
Let's do it at 30.
And I guess.
The reason we, sorry, the reason we didn't expand on the one, or the 10 and 20 is it, then it's no longer cost-effective to have our own fuel site.
Right.
We can, for unleaded, we could probably go to the pump and pay less. And so that's why when we first put this out, we were doing the 10 and 20-year plan. But then it was just, that doesn't pencil out, makes sense.
Well, I thought that you were looking for the total amount because at 10 years, it's 80 cents a gallon and 40 cents a gallon for 20 years, or for 20 years.
And then down to 27.
And then down to 27 for 30.
And I, personally, I think that department heads are going to want to look at this, right? Because if I have to absorb this into my budget, which I have to do, it's, you know, we go into a budget year and go, we're going flat, that makes it pretty tough, right? Because now I'm starting to lose a lot, especially big departments, got a big fleet. Every, it, it hurts everybody. So I guess, so that's the information I want. How, you know, are, are those guys set up for that? Are they, they ready? We're going to have to do it. I mean, I'm, I'm behind this, I've been behind it forever. We got to do it. I just, I kind of want everybody, not everybody's going to be completely on board, right? But they got to know what's going on and how it's going to affect them and how we're going to make these moves.
So I actually do have those numbers. So at the 10-year payback, it'll be $240,000 a year. At 20 years, it will add $120,000 a year. And at 30 years, it adds 80,000. So it's not actually 100,000, it would be an $80,000 a year impact over the current price we're paying.
So I've, I've got a question from Josh and then, and then Mangum, but I'm going to crowd in here. With these, if we're saving, if it's, we're saving 310,000 a year now, 10, even the 10 year would be cost-effective for the?
Yeah. But that's why we, we wanted to come and talk about it because it would, the 10 and the 20s would have a huge, a pretty big impact on budgets.
Yeah.
So it's just.
Those would really hit the departments the hardest.
They would, they would. Josh?
I, I personally don't feel the need to wait for department consultation to, to give direction today because I think the alternative is them paying pump prices in five years and nobody really wants that. Like I think, you know, as I was pointing out, this is pretty essential. I think, I know you guys are going to brief them, but in terms of direction today, I would also though, there's a bullet point I've been thinking about since I got this packet and, and that's the funding source, or the replacement fund on this, this point. I would be interested in, in doing, whether it be the, at the 20-year rate or at the 30-year rate with an additional, for example, five cents for unleaded and 10 cents for diesel surcharge as a replacement fund for when we have to do this again. It may not cover everything, we don't know what prices will look like. That way, you know, because diesel has the largest margin to, to gain and can cut in and still be pretty cost-effective, I think we could maybe do, do a little bit more there. But I, I don't know if those are numbers that you would think are the best. That's just kind of my, my gut shot. Please, feedback.
Yeah, what we did is we just used, trying to estimate 30 years. I, I tried to get calculate, you know, futures calculators and whatnot. So it was just too hard to do. So we just used the price of this because we don't know what 30 years is going to look like.
Okay.
And so for that 30-year replacement, it would be the 27 cents a gallon.
And is that, is that to repay?
So we would repay streets, but then we would also put another 27 cents in so that in 30 years, we could pay cash for this.
So that 27 cents, I guess I've misunderstood this conversation. So that 27 cents, does that include both? Because the money that we're going to use, our funding source, we have to repay, correct? Does that 27 cents then include both the repayment as well as the new site?
No.
No. What does that, that 27 cents include then?
The 27 cents includes the pro, the project over a 30-year span to build it, the 2.4.
To build this, this year's.
This year's site.
Yep.
And then to pay it back over 30 years to the street department is 27 cents.
Okay.
Now, if we want to be proactive and, and plan for 30 years from now, we would probably want to put another 27 cents a year, or a gallon on.
Okay.
So that in thirty years, we have two and a half million. That may not even be a drop in the bucket, but at least we're.
Sure. Then, if that's, I mean, okay, so maybe, maybe then, maybe then I think my, what I would probably say would be most comfortable, man, that forty cents is a hard number.
It would be fifty-four cents.
Well, it'd be fifty-four, but what if, I mean, if you did forty and then put thirteen cents a gallon away for the replacement fund? That doesn't solve everything, but it puts us a whole lot better in thirty years than where we are right now.
So I, I guess I have a, a question when it comes to replacing. If, I mean, we, we haven't started, we haven't moved the dirt clod yet, but that being said, we're talking replacement of this thing. When it comes to replacing this two point four million, you're talking about a facility and all of that stuff, grading and all that. So to replace the tanks in thirty years, we're not rebuilding the entire facility, we're just replacing tanks.
Yeah, so what we proposed on that is.
I would think.
We would replace the tanks, we'd replace the plumbing, we'd have to replace the dispensers, the operating system, and then what other repairs needed for the canopy and the bathrooms and all that.
Can, can you?
So that's why we felt comfortable with that two and a half million.
Sorry.
Sorry, I guess, so that, that two and a half million then, and, and the highlight of the things that you just outlined, that, that covers to build the new fuel site and put in all the equipment that we need right now?
Correct.
Okay. But to Mayor's point, in thirty years, we're not going to have to do this whole process again, per se. It'll just be, replace the tanks, for example, and the equipment and, and do, what percentage of that is the project right now? Of those parts?
Yeah, it's probably two-thirds of it.
Two-thirds?
Wow, okay.
And unfortunately, because we, we thought about those options with our current tanks, but where they're encased in, it would just, it would, it would be difficult to upgrade.
If, if we were to start budgeting.
Building it for upgrades.
If we were to budget it for a replacement fund, a budget or replacement fund surcharge of whatever amount we, we finally decide on, do you feel like it'd be best to do just per gallon? Or should it be calculated and broken out per unleaded versus diesel, doing it at different rates because of the profit margin, or the margin?
We could do that, we could break it in either way. We just want to give you a ballpark on what it is.
Okay, I've got a, we're going to jump to Councilmember Marchand. Cory is, is back and forth on me here, so we may come back. Councilmember Marchand, and then after him, then we've got Linda.
Okay.
So quickly, how often, how often are you buying fuel? When are you, you getting your prices for a year? Six months?
Two weeks.
So every two weeks? And how much fuel are we buying every two weeks?
Ten thousand gallons of diesel and unleaded.
Each?
And the?
It's like six thousand gallons of diesel and four thousand of unleaded, roughly.
So we're getting a pri, a new price every two weeks?
And it's, it's benefited us. Some of the agencies do a year-long bid, and so with the instability in the markets, they always go high. And so we're actually chasing the market with.
So you think it's better to do it that way?
Absolutely.
So prices go down, benefits, it's going to benefit the departments, correct? Okay. I mean, that's not something.
I don't want to get off on a tangent, Mayor, sorry. But we just started putting some numbers together. Last year, we budgeted three dollars and twenty cents a gallon for diesel, for this year, twenty-three, and three dollars and thirty-two cents for unleaded. What we're seeing on our forecasts is two dollars and eighty-seven, eighty-three cents for unleaded, and three twelve for diesel.
We add twenty-seven cents to that.
Yeah, so we're, but we're actually going down this year from what we were. But it's, we're not going to lock in that number till the day we have to.
Yeah. Okay, I've got Linda, and then Josh again.
I wanted to agree with what Josh said a moment ago about, you know, I don't feel like we need to wait and go and talk to department heads, because the only alternative is that they're going to, you know, buy at the pump, which is not really an option. That's, there's no savings there. And it seems like all of these options, there is savings. So it's just a matter of which amount we feel most comfortable with, or, you know. So I'm thinking two things. The twenty-year option would be forty cents, and then we're talking like an additional thirteen, fourteen cents for, you know, saving for the future. So looking at fifty-four cents for departments, or the thirty-year option, the twenty-seven cents, and then we could do twenty-seven cents for future and get to that same fifty-four cents, but have a lot less, I mean, a lot more money in the future. So to me, it's kind of one of those two options would be our best choice. I do think we need to move on this. I don't think it's a question of whether we should do this project or not, I think we need to. So I think the sooner we decide on this, the better. But of those two, do you have, is there a recommendation of what you think would be better?
Personally, because of the volatility of prices, I like the thirty-year, because I know it's a longer time for payback, but it gives us some cushion. We can always revisit it, pay it off early, stuff like that. So personally, for me, I think it would be easier to stomach from the departments at the thirty-year. There's no restrictions on when we have to pay this money back.
And would you recommend, so I said twenty-seven cents plus twenty-seven cents. There's also the option of doing, you know, twenty-seven plus fourteen or something, and, and having less of a hit to departments. Do you have a feeling about that? I mean, obviously, saving more money is a good thing. It means down the road, you know, we're in better shape. But I just want to get your thoughts on that.
Yeah, so for the, the future fund, so we're not in this same boat thirty years from now, we just did a quick, two and a half millions for thirty years, twenty-seven cents, twenty-eight cents. We can, whatever it was, we can make it five cents, we can make it whatever you guys are comfortable with, because in thirty years, it's probably going to be a whole different picture anyway.
Right.
You know, if we plan for two and a half millions, it could be eight, or it could be, we don't use fuel in thirty years, who knows?
We're flying by then.
Yeah, yeah, so. But I, I think it's important that we look to that future, because that's something that we're struggling with. If we would have done this thirty years ago, it would have made this conversation a lot easier.
And I'm just thinking, the less we hurt our departments, the better, but, but also planning for the future too. So, I mean, maybe even something like, you know, twenty-seven cents for the payback and, you know, twenty cents for the future savings or some.
So we got Josh, and then, and then I got some.
I think, I think over, I, I, the, I think, given the uncertainty around where prices are, my personal feeling is maybe towards somewhere in the eight to ten cents for a replacement fund in the future. That puts us at about half of what we would need if we have to do this again in thirty years, right? And this twenty-seven cents becomes a permanent surcharge, for example, that we're just paying back streets again, then, then so be it. But the, the advantage here is that this, you know, eight to ten cents gets us halfway there. And then as, the, the two things about this that are really nice. Number one is that if we watch prices the way that things are going and we're estimating in ten years, oh, actually, this might be going up, we can adjust that ten cents. But secondly, if we have another, I don't know, war in Ukraine, we can cut that ten cents for, and put it on pause for a period of six months, or ten months, or however long, right? And, and we, until prices stabilize again. So that, that ten cents, I think, could be an extra flexibility. So that's the number I think is, is a good replacement fund without creating an unnecessary burden on immediate budgets. I mean, I worry about thirty-seven, somewhere between thirty-five and thirty-seven being the final number is, with, with eight to ten going to reserves is kind of how I imagine it. If we need a motion, I, I, you know, you've got thoughts, but if afterwards, I'd be happy to make a motion on direction.
Okay, I was, I was, just a couple of things. You're still going to need to get with departments, because they have to build their budget with this. And so the departments are going to be, they're going to know what to expect a little bit as we move forward. Really, truly, we need the decision made so that he, they can go to the departments. And it sounds like we have a dollar amount that, that maybe Cory was looking for. I, I don't want to get too far in the weeds, because I think in thirty years, things are going to be different anyway. But I think that, I agree, we've got to move on this. I, I think if we wait and we lose this sixty-day period, which is amazing that they held a price for sixty days, because if you go into the lumberyard and say, I want to build a house, give me this price for lumber, they give you that price, and you ask them how long it's good for, and they say about three more hours. And so it's, it's incredible that they've got the, they'll hold it for sixty days, and I think it's just going to go up right now. And so I don't want to get in the weeds too much. I, I think we can get, we can decide a time, and then we can figure out what that excess surcharge is for, you know, for future. But this will help the departments build their budget the way they're going to need to. If the councils agrees that we need to continue to do this, if, if you say, you know what, let's just hold off on this, then we hold off on it and, and we go from there. But, but I, I think it's, I agree, it's necessary, we've got to do something.
We just wanted to get the discussion going on the replacement, we're, we're not locked into the.
Yeah.
So we could be locked into the twenty-seven cents, though, right? I mean, that's what it's going to cost us. That's what it's going to cost every department, twenty-seven cents if we're not looking at the future, right? So today, we could say that's the best option in front of us right now. I don't know that we all feel that way, but if that's the best option, the twenty-seven cents is the best option, and we tell you, move forward, the twenty-seven cents, and then we figure out how we're going to do the, because I'm all over the maintenance part, I've always been over the maintenance part, it's, it's going to cost us twenty-seven cents, no matter how we, how we look at it per gallon. And then I, I think if we say, move forward that way, and then maybe do some brainstorming on how we're going to, how much more money it's going to take per gallon to do that. I, I just think it's, it's going to be tough on departments. This is, when budget time comes, this, this is a big hit. It's a twenty-seven cents a gallon for certain departments is a big hit. But I also think they're, they're going to understand we need to do something for maintenance. In your mind, you're going, not going to be here, you'd probably be the only one still sitting up here in thirty years. So I, I just look at it that way. I'm, I'm, I'm for this, I think we've got to move ahead, I just, I.
I, I think that the council, I think that if we do this and you say the twenty-seven, that's where everybody seems to be talking right now, if we're going to move forward with this, is a twenty-seven cents. Remember that the excess is low-hanging fruit, and when, when they've got to go, wait, we need to cut something out of a budget. Future councils, past councils has done this, future councils will do this, they'll go, you know, we have to hit that twenty-seven cents, but we're not going to do that ten cents, or we're not going to do that other twenty-seven cents, and so. And so that's just something that future councils are going to have to deal with. Right now, we can start a fund and set it, set it aside, if that's what the council wants to do, but future councils, we're, we're in the weeds, and future councils are going to have to make those decisions.
One thing to, to think about as well is, every year, we talk about fuel prices. And we try our best to get what we think it's going to be, and what the markets are telling us it's going to be. Like, for instance, if, if it keeps on right now, unleaded could almost save fifty cents a gallon from last year's budget amount. So some years, it might be a hit, some years, it may not. Like diesel would only be an eight cent.
Well, and, and that hit, I think, is kind of the same across the board with departments. The dollar amounts are bigger for some than others, but the percentage is the same across the board. And so it's, it, it does hit every department, it definitely hurts. Linda, and then Josh, and then Cory. Write it down. Okay.
I wanted to comment on two things that you said, Mr. Mayor, that the, the low-hanging fruit idea. I mean, I, I would rather that we do come up with a number. It's easy, like you say, when we're looking for something to cut, that's kind of the first thing to be cut. And so, yes, we do have to do the twenty-seven cents, but I, I would rather us come up with the other number as well, so that we are kind of committing to something, and that we're not just going to say, yeah, we'll come up with that, and then, you know, it becomes difficult, so we don't do it. I think we need to be saving for the future. So I, I would do that part, but the other thing that you said is about, you know, giving our department heads as much direction as possible in order to build their budget. And so I'm thinking if we just do the twenty-seven cents now, and sort of say, we'll figure out the other number later, that's not helping them know what they need to work with. So I'd rather.
No, I, and I understand what you're saying on that, and this council can make that decision right now, but in a year, we could have a different council.
Right, right.
That will, that will have to make the decision, are we going to do ten cents? Are we going to do twelve cents? Are we going to do any at all?
And I know that's what you're, what you were saying. And I think, you know, that could happen, but in order to make it less likely, I'd like us to kind of make that commitment, now that we come up with some number, it may get changed down the road.
So you're saying, you're saying instead of twenty-seven cents, go with the thirty-year, instead of twenty-seven cents, just make it thirty-seven cents, and that's what the number is?
I, I would rather do that. I liked Josh's proposal, you know, I was talking twenty-seven plus twenty-seven, but that's a big hit. So I think your suggestion of eight to ten cents, I'd probably go with the ten, but I'd rather come up with that number now, that then we give department heads, you know.
For this year's budget, I agree.
Yes, yeah.
I agree.
So a recommendation I would have is, we're going to be back in a few weeks talking fuel prices. I think, you know, we could think about our replacement plans, and once we have kind of a forecast on what the prices are actually at, I think that could be a good opportunity to talk about the replacement plan. Because today, all we really need is, are we willing to pay the two point four? Are we willing to have streets do it? Are we willing? That's just really what we need today to keep going. But I just don't want to rush you and say, we need a, we need a number on a replacement, because we can do that through the budgeting process. If that helps. And then you get some time to think about it, and, you know, fuel prices may go up like crazy in a week, and then it's going to be, you know, really hurt, so.
Josh?
We need a motion then, for this direction.
We do, but Cory's got some before you do anything.
I, I say let's make the motion, but let's make it at the twenty-seven cents. And like Tom said, we can come back and revisit the future thing in a couple of weeks when they come back with the fuel prices and all that. Just makes sense to get it, to get the ball rolling, instead of us keep going on and on about.
Why don't we make, but if, if the council's interested in doing this, why don't we just make the motion that we're interested in spending the two point four million dollars? And then in a couple of weeks, we can figure out what that number it looks like and stuff like that, where, because this has got to come in front of the council anyway.
Right.
To be approved at a future council meeting, which is going to be not next week, so it'd be the first part of March before they could get it to us anyway. And so they just kind of probably are looking for a, are we willing to do it? And then it, it won't, obviously, it won't be final, but you can let the contractor know, look, they're, they're moving forward with this, and so that would, that's really what you're looking for.
We just wanted to start the dialogue on the replacement funds.
And then, and then when that comes out, instead of locking numbers in and everything, we can kind of see what it looks like, and, and everybody can digest it a little bit.
I kind of sticker shocked everybody, so, you know, it's hard to come up with that magic number maybe today. It'd be good to think about it.
Well, in that case, I would move that we don't, whoa.
Oh, no.
Did I do something wrong here?
Yeah, you are, no, not yet, but you're about to.
Yeah, I'm just going to sit back, someone else will take care of this.
Sorry, one, one thought, counsel, Jared Johnson, City Attorney. The contract needs to come before you, but I would also suggest, I think it's best practice to have in mind the repayment option, or the repayment plan for that contract before the contract is approved. I worry that we're using street reserve funds for this build, we do a contract, it's executed. I worry that we're using street reserve funds for this build, we do a contract, it's executed, I know it'll happen, I don't have any doubt about that, but I do worry about that process looking like we didn't have that plan in place and approved by you as counsel before the contract was approved.
So Jared, help me with this then. A motion, it sounds like the interest is to do that. A motion would sound something to the effect of we move to move ahead with the payment of 2.4 million dollars, up to 2.4 million dollars for a fuel site with replacement costs at the 30 year rate that.
Not replacement costs, but repayment costs.
Repayment, repayment costs at that rate, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, to be paid by the departments that use the fuel site, so that there's some mechanism in the motion that approves the moving forward of the contract to repay the amount of money that's contracted.
So, so would that motion not happen for, because the contract's got to come in front of us in a couple of weeks, would that not be the motion then?
It could be.
Or what do you?
But I think, I think giving, giving staff direction to bring the contract forward should include the repayment plan for that contract as well, so that you have a contract in front of you at that point, and I would hate for that to get held up at that point based on a repayment discussion, and just go ahead and approve the contract without that repayment already decided by council.
Okay. So if there's a motion, then.
Now, now, when we make this motion, down the road, if we're like, you know, the 30 cents, the 30 cents or 40, 50, $2, whatever the number is, if we're like, you know, this isn't working, we can make a motion later to then back off of that amount, correct? Or?
As long as repayment is still being contemplated and approved by council, yes, I'm okay with that.
So in the motion, sorry for interrupting you, so in the motion, we can say something to the effect of, with repayment under consideration, or do we need to have a number?
I think today, you need to have a repayment plan as part of your motion.
Okay.
And whether that, that repayment plan is amended in the future or not is up to you or future councils, but I just think that that's an important element because of the strings attached to the street reserve fund that we're, we're using for this project.
Yes, sir.
So when we're talking repayment, that's 27 cents.
Yeah.
It's not 35 or 55.
27.
Because part of it, as I look at this thing, and I'm just, again, you know, I think department heads might look at it and say, we could do up to this much money, right? We could do up to, maybe it's smart to, to go 50 cents, that we, we can, but they're not even getting an option to look at it right now if we say 30, and I'm not saying that we don't change it, if they come back and go, we just want to do the 27. I think we need to do more than 27. I just, I just.
But just to get the ball rolling.
Yeah, I, I want to see it happen, I want to say, we're going to do it at 27, and I want to see what they have to say. If we can do more, less, how it's going to affect them, that's what I would like to do.
So council member Marshand, I think that, I think that the motion should sound, and whoever makes a motion, if, if it's the desire to do this, is something of the 30 year, repayment in the 30 year timeframe.
As proposed.
As proposed, and then we, that, we know we're at least at 27 cents.
Right.
And then that can change and.
And I think it will change, I mean, I truly think it will change.
I think in the future, the councils may look at it and say, you know what, I want, we want to put X amount of dollars so it doesn't hit the, the departments this hard. And so I think that there's a lot of options there, but if that's what you want, it would entertain a motion.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion then, with three parts then. First, directing staff to prepare the contract to bring before council in order to replace this fuel site with the estimated cost around 2.4 million. Second, to prepare it with a repayment plan of 30 years at the indicated, and proposed 27 cents surcharge for repayment costs paid for by the departments for streets. And third, I would direct streets department to consult with department heads concerning a figure to come before council as well with a replacement cost for the next time we need to do this project during future fuel cost estimations. Subject all to legal department review. Jared?
Sounds great.
I don't like that, but, but it is what it is, so. I have, I have a, I, of course you did. I have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Mangum. I heard you, Lynn, but he had, it was ahead of you.
He was louder.
He was closer. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
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 Okay, so you'll bring this, you'll get this, bring it in to us with those numbers right now, and then the council can make decisions on how much more over and above that 27 cents, or, or not, if they're willing to do that in the future, but the departments will have an idea of what that's going to look like. Okay.
Thank you both for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry the mayor took so long. It's all his fault.
It is. Council, do you, how long is this going to be, James?
That's up to you.
Oh, you're up, you're up.
Yeah, it's Will Claver that will be presenting, it's up to you.
So I'm interested in a break for a second.
I'd like to follow.
We're going to take a, a break, and so you can get up here and get ready to go, Will, and we will be right back in a few minutes. Thank you for joining us after the break. We will go ahead and continue on with agenda item number eight is a Pocatello sign survey report 2022-23. Planning and Development Services staff members will be in attendance to present findings of the sign survey conducted between December 22 and January 23 to, and to see council's directions and in consideration of drafting a new sign code.
Morning, Mayor and council members, my name is Will Claver, I'm the assistant planner for the city of Pocatello. This is Jim Anglesey, he's the senior long range planner. Jim Anglesey's also, previously was in charge of the sign code, so he has a lot of the background that I was able to take over and start getting this sign code and survey up, up to speed. I first wanted to talk about our value, our vision, and the reason, the overarching theory of this, to remind us of that.
Just to remind you, our value, our vision is not just the comprehensive plan, but it's a planning process where we're getting engagement from, from the community members on what they like to see, whether it's the comprehensive plan, downtown plan, any other plan, or changes to our code. And just as you see here, that, that's a process that's centered in equity, education, empowerment, and engagement. And the sign code is definitely part of that, the survey is part of this process.
The, give a little background on the sign code, it was adopted in 1991. Since then, there's been miscellaneous updates, and that's caused a lot of confusion for, for staff, for community members, for contractors, and it takes quite a bit of time to understand the nuances, and it seems like every time we get a question from a contractor, we find something new in the code. So it's, it's getting confusing and cumbersome to enforce. Also, there was a Supreme Court case of Reed v. Gilbert, which established, established signs can't be regulated based on the content, but must be regulated on the time, place, and manner. A lot of, some of our regulations may find trouble with those standards. Furthermore, with our vision, our, our value, our vision, we've found emphasis for beautification efforts. It didn't necessarily state signs a whole much, it did talk a little bit about signs, but one way to, to, to enforce, or to look at beautification is looking at our sign ordinance. So we're, we're here today to seek guidance, to get, report on the findings we've given, or we've found from that survey report done in December of 2022, but also to get your feedback of how we're going to move forward with, with certain sign types within the city. Back in, so the sign survey was conducted at December 5, 2022 through January 5, 2023. We asked, asked several questions to gauge how residents wanted to, or felt about the signs within Pocatello, such as a sign preference survey, if Yellowstone, they felt Yellowstone was cluttered, or if they felt downtown was cluttered, how they felt, and which signs enhance those two corridor, a major corridor and a major district within our city. We also asked them what extent certain signs should be regulated, and then how they use, if they use signs to go to the businesses, we, we felt that was an important question to ask, so we can not be hindering any businesses within our code as well. Overall, 397 surveys were taken, and 91% of those were residents within the city. There was one from Japan, which I thought was interesting, and the median age was 31 to 45, and which roughly follows what we're finding is, yeah, the median age for the city in general. On, right below those is question seven, I based my decision to visit a, visit a sign, or I based my decision to visit a business on, and it goes through, it's kind of small on there. So right here's based off signage. Red means it's, or pink, whatever you want to call that, is strongly disagree, while green is strongly agree. The findings have, for this question, is signage plays a role, but it doesn't play the only role or a significant role in someone going to, to visit that business. The major way people go to visit their business is based off word of mouth, and then also based off of online platforms. If you have questions, please stop me, and I'll, I'd be glad to ask or answer those as well. Overall, Yellowstone Avenue, they felt was very visual cluttered, that's the red right here, with green being in visual harmony, and then gray being some other form. Same color coding for downtown, but most, majority of people felt that it was a visual So temporary signs, temporary signs, and the format, how I'm going to go through this, is I'm going to say how we currently regulate it, what we found the preference for, the sign preference, and then the preferred level of regulation, and then I'll seek your guidance on how we want to move forward with the code, if we want to have, it'll, it'll show you a range of, from no regulation, no permits, to complete, or abandoned within the city. Currently, for temporary signs, they, we don't require permits for them. Certain aspects of them, like the non-commercial signs, such as political, religious, and ideological messages, we, we say you can have them up for 60 days within a six month period, so January 1 through June 31st, and then it starts over and you can have another 60 day period. Also, the max allowance on that is 32 square feet. Again, we, we don't track those, so it's kind of hard to enforce, and it's, and, yeah, it's just hard to enforce or to make sure they're actually following those, those rules. And commercial and industrial zones, banners, sales, pennants, flags, and portable signs, they are, no permits required again, and each business is allowed one of those temporary signs. And then the same with the residential zones is, it's allowed for, it allows for those ideological, political signs to be up for those 60 days. Yeah.
Just a quick question on the banners, you said each business is allowed one, so those kind of flag things?
Yep.
Like those? So you see businesses put out all the way down the sidewalk, so that's actually against our code?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Something we're, we're finding is, with the cumbersomeness of the code, it's also hard for us to enforce and then do code enforcement, and code enforcement takes a lot of time on our resources, and it's, it's just something that we have to, we're struggling to keep up with. General regulations, really, they vary by individual zones as well, like commercial and industrials, those are the basics, but it has different sign allowances based on certain circumstances, but also based off the certain zones. What we're finding from the public's input is that they're not liked at all. Red is least preferred, green is most preferred, and I highlighted each one, it is kind of small, but each A frames here, banners are here, flags are on this one, and then yards are on the far end. They're not liked, majority is strongly least preferred, strongly dislike. While regulations for these ones are the least regulations, so the color kind of flips on us, least regulations, green, while the most regulations, red. And while they're, you can see that they're one of the higher ones that are preferred to have regulations stronger, and the strongest regulations. Any questions on that so far? Okay. So this is where I'm seeking input from you on temporary signs specifically. As you can see, there's, I've done a little bit of a scale for you, where we can do no regulations, no permits, we can do no permits but have the regulations, and that's kind of where we are with the temporary signs. We can require them to do a permit, or, and just, we can go down that. Yeah.
So are we talking about like yard signs too, just like those little tiny OfficeMax yard signs also?
Yes.
Okay.
What about Realtor signs putting in people's yards, is that included in this, or is that?
Yes, it would be, Realtor signs.
Roofing companies?
They're regulated differently.
Are they?
Yeah, Realtor signs are regulated differently.
So how would this affect Realtor signs, because if I'm going to sell my house, I want somebody to know it's for sale.
Right.
They're allowed to be up as long as the sale is, is still up.
Is there a cost associated with that?
No.
Like, are we incurring any payment?
They don't require a permit for Realtor signs.
Okay. So regardless of what comes out here, there's no permit required for, this would not make a Realtor sign required to get a permit for that.
Currently, that's what it is, yeah, and you could, if you want to continue that, that we could go that route.
Because I think they're different, they're two different signs, is the roofing, your house is being roofed by X, or, you know, is a lot different than the.
Than a Realtor's.
Than a Realtor's sign, so.
And, and the difficulty there too is, banks will fund a project, like, you know, a big building being put up, and so this project was funded by X bank or whatever, and so that kind of fills, fits into that same description as the Realtor.
Does that fit into the same description as Realtor signs?
That one would fall under, like, if, if I'm understanding correctly, those ones are like for new construction, those would be, fall under like construction signs, which are different.
Okay.
Okay, I got Josh, and then it looks like Linda.
First question, are political signs included in this?
Those are temporary, yes.
So, for example, if, like for yard signs, if we put require permits, like.
Well, a lot of, what I've seen, a lot of, a lot of cities have been doing, is they will put a moratorium within the, like a 30 day, or however long you want to, around the election, election time, and that's how they get around.
We can kind of create those windows, okay. And then I guess my second question is, what would, what would the permitting process be for something like these temporary signs?
It could be something as simple as, we just want you to pull a permit, we could have a free permit, but that's something that attracts us, and then we can, if you want to keep the timeline regulation, we can do that. It really could be anything from a registry of sorts, so just saying we want to keep track of it, to, to more strict enforcement of it.
Linda?
I was going to ask about political signs too. Ours was always 60 days out from the election, you could put them up, and then five days after, they have to be. After they have to be down. Does that policy have, I mean, can, can that policy sort of be just for that type of sign? Or if you have something like that, does it then have to apply to other temporary signs? Or, you know, can that be sort of its own subcategory with that limitation?
The research I've done at least, and Legal might be able to back me up or do a little bit more, is trying to get away from the content-based and Reed v. Gilbert doesn't necessarily say how that can handle it, but the recommendations at least from planning associations and sign associations have been to, to err on the side of splitting them up and to just put that moratorium along the, allow for that time of period to, to be in place.
For just the political?
No, no, for all signs.
Oh, for all of it?
That way you're not, you're not basing it off on the content of it.
You're not singling out content, I got you.
But you're going on the time, place, and manner so that if it looks like, if it looks like a yard sign, then that's how you'd probably see it as. If it looks like a Realtor sign, then you can do a Realtor sign type. If it looks like that, then that's how, how we regulate it.
But other than Realtor signs, which are during the sale period, all other temporary signs, regardless of their content, the sort of best practice, I guess, is or recommended is just have some kind of timeframe, but not distinguish.
Right.
Between different content.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, Scott?
I'm confused. So.
I'm going to put it on you right now.
I mean, the first thing you said is, I look at the sign code and it's confusing.
Right.
And thi- this is your job, right? And you're confused. And I'm confused just listening to it. So it sounds like to me, we got to look at the whole, this whole thing, right? And rewrite it and, and figure out which way we're going to go and make it simple.
Yep.
Right? I understand the political signs. I don't think we, somebody should be able to put up a political sign and then the guy that's roofing this house can't put a sign in the yard while he's roofing the house that says, "I'm roofing this house," right? This, because that's what you look at. You drive by and you need a roof and you go, "Well, that looks pretty good and I want to know who it is."
Right.
So I guess as we sit here and look at all this, we can go back and forth all day long, but if the code is confusing, what we should be talking about is rewriting the code.
Right.
And doing it the right way.
And this is?
And not trying to change a, a little piece of this or a little piece of that right now, right?
And, and this is an effort to rewrite the whole sign code. We want to receive the direction to how, how strict we want to be on certain, certain sign types, but then we'll also reorganize the sign code to, to be more simple and that, let's say in a couple of years I leave and someone else comes in, they can pick up right where I start left off and not have too much of a learning curve. Or if Joe off the street wants to put a sign up, he'll be able to understand.
Well, and I, and I think that's, I think that's the way we need to go. I just, I don't know, do we go through this whole thing and try to give you direction? Or do we, as a council, and, and this is just a question, do we have you, you're the one that has to, you enforce it, I guess, right? It's not going to code enforcement over there. You guys are the ones that are trying to track whatever. So you, you, you kind of know what you need to track.
Right.
Right? So would it be easier that you just put it together the way that you see it that makes it the biggest benefit for the city? I guess what I'm saying is, is you're the professional, you put it together and then you bring it to us and say, "Here it is," right? And then we're able to look at it and say, "I like that," or "I don't like this," or "Do we change that?"
Yeah. If, if that's the direction Council wants to go, we can definitely bring you a draft of a code and give you our best shot at it. We just kind of wanted to get a little bit of direction before we made that best shot so we didn't have to rewrite a code that was completely opposite to Council's wishes.
So thinking about businesses, and we have like the A-frame, like the sandwich boards and the banners, the flags, sales, all that up there. Is there a certain distance that it has to be from the business, it's from the building itself? Or are we talking about just in general, blanketed, if it's outside, there's a, there's a permit required, no permit, regulation, no regu- like, are we looking at it just in general? Or is it like if it's out on the sidewalk, this is where the preview starts? Or as soon as it exits that door, we're regulating it?
As soon as the, it exits that door typically is how, how we would see it.
I think what you're asking is what level of detail do you want to get direction on?
Right.
And I think it's the high level, like what we have on the, the scale. Like, should we be looking more of permitting temporary signs or should we not? That, that kind of direction? And, and we'll, we'll come with a sign code with the details.
Okay.
Josh?
Does the, so in order for Council to give direction, we have to make a motion in order to act, no?
No.
We can just, we can just give some direction because.
Okay.
We're going to have to make a, unless there's a big argument and then we want to come to a consensus.
Okay.
But we're going to have to approve this after they've rewritten it, which will give us an opportunity to.
Okay.
Go through it again too.
Then, oh, go.
We'll come back to you with, as another work session when we have a code drafted up.
Well, the, my personal feedback, given the statistics that you showed us on how people feel about the signage, and I, I think there is at least to some extent, you know, select, response bias, right? People who feel strongly about the code or, and I'm sure you guys know that. But given that's the case, I think that an online free permitting system where people can apply is probably a good, good start somewhere in the middle to the, and even in certain zones would be the area than that I would lean just based on people's responses and then how they feel and that they feel so strongly about these temporary signs and are so strongly opposed to them. I would probably slide somewhere in those two, in my opinion.
Can I get a couple of options?
Yeah.
I'd like to see it exactly what Josh is talking about, but I'd also like to see it with, I mean, just throw another option or whatever the other option is, kind of two different, the polar opposite of each other, to see what it looks like and then the possible outcomes. If we do do it this way, this could be outcome. If we do it this way, this could be the outcome. So that way we have a reasonable understanding of what we're looking at and then we can see what it's going to look like out in the city once implemented, if that makes sense.
Yeah. You got that? Okay. All right, we'll move on to the next one. Window signs. So window signs really aren't too much, it looks complicated on the left side. Window signs are, we only allow fifty percent for the sign. Currently, how it's been enforced is because of our definitions that is out here, if this, the sign itself is removed from the, the background of it and then they put a similar background in the, from it, they can have it because it's not technically the sign. It's just a treatment of it. What we found from the pref- from the preference survey, and admittedly, one flaw in the survey that we didn't catch was we, for preference, we looked at window signage, that was fifty percent, and then full coverage window signage. But for preferred level of regulation, we only call that window signage. And so that may account for a couple, why it's, it's favorable or why it's not favorable. The preference that we've found is full coverage is not desirable, but the, the partial coverage is desirable to the citizens of Pocatello. And they think that sign regulation or the sign, window signs should be regulated pretty, pretty low. As in, just require a permit or maybe even currently how we do it of, with the permits and that's it. Yeah.
Question on this. You know, currently, in our historic district, we have different requirements maybe than in other places in town. So are, are we looking at continuing that idea and maintaining our sort of historic standards for that area? Or are we looking at one blanket?
I'll let Jim speak to that one. He's the one that deals with historic preservation signs currently right now.
Yeah. It would still be a special district. What we're really looking at though, however, is does it or does it not affect the historic material of the building rather, rather than it, whether or not the size of sign should be, should be limited or not? Because really, when we were looking at historic preservation, windows most of the time are not historic. And so those aren't, aren't a big deal as far as preservation. But if we're, you know, going to drill into historic masonry to add a new wall sign, that's when that would kick in, preservation type. And so we still will have different standards for historic preservation.
Okay.
Dealing with historic materials.
Okay.
Corey and then Scott.
So reading this, it, it looks like there's no preference on regulation, is that right or no?
Yeah, right here, the preference on regulation is a majority of the, of the respondents said least regulation from all the signs.
They just don't even care.
Well, yeah, I, I guess it's kind of hard to say if they don't care or not, but they don't want it to be regulated as, as intensely as.
As intensely as like a yard sign or?
Or, yeah, as a yard ti- sign or even, we'll get to this, billboards and electronic message displays. It just, a lot of it's, it, it's kind of up to us to interpret what does least regulation mean, but they don't see that it needs to be banned at least. Or even on the, probably the right side of the, of the spectrum that is right over here. It probably is require permits with regulation or no permits with regulations.
I lean more towards the latter, no permit.
I agree with you there, Corey. Yeah.
Scott?
So covering basically all the signs, right? How does a business know what kind of sign they can put up?
And so they'll go to our code or they'll call us.
Do they go or do they just put a sign up? And then do you go to them and say, "Hey, you can't have that sign"?
They, so typically.
Enforcement issue.
What's that?
It's a code enforcement issue.
Well, and I, and I guess what I'm saying is, right? Again, it comes down to communication and how we communicate with businesses and, and what options they have. So one of the things I've, I've looked at and I've, I've just tried to research the business licensing, right? We don't have business licenses in Pocatello, but if we had something like that, you could have added on to that, you're starting your business here, here's what you can do sign-wise, this is what you can put up, this is how you can do it. And now we're not having a code enforcement issue. They understand it, they sign off on it, they've done whatever they need to do and we're not bugging you.
And, and that's huge because once we, once we create like a business license, if there's an added fee for having this business license, the permit cost for having signs up or painting is, is in that fee, right? So like to say it's two hundred dollars to have that business license, part of that two hundred dollars is your permit as a business to be able to have yard signs, A-frames, window painting.
Whatever's legal.
Scott Marchand dancing around, whatever. This is right there and it's part of the cost.
Yeah.
But I don't know if that's you guys who would work on that or Legal?
I think that would be part of it. I just, I, you know, a lot of the stuff we do within the city, we, we lose that communication between, you know, businesses. They roll in and go, "I've, I've started this business and I want everybody to know this is my business, so here's the sign." Well, that sign doesn't fit into anything and, you know, two weeks later, somebody's rolling in going, "Hey, you can't do that, you got to take it down." Well, I'm twenty-five hundred dollars into it. Tough luck, right? I mean, I'm just, again, looking towards the future, trying to make your job easier.
Yeah.
Right? And I, and the sign code is just tough.
I think, I think one thing that does help alleviate these concerns, so, I mean, the companies that do the signage have to, I mean, they're, they're knowledgeable of the sign code, they understand the permitting process. And so when I go and contact a company and say, "Hey, I'm ready for a sign," they're going to tell me, "Well, you've got to have the proper permits and such." So I think that does help address it. But on the matter of window coverage, getting back to the topic at hand, I, I also agree with Corey and, and I think that they're the least intrusive. It, it doesn't take up additional space on their, I know, kind of really on their property and on their building. And so I, I would agree with the no permits with regulations is where I would lean.
I, I think I would do a full window too. I don't think I'd cut it in half. If they want to cut it in half, they can, but that's me personally. Linda?
I'm good with sort of minimal regulation on windows with the exception of historic district. I think there should be some standards there. I lean more towards partial coverage rather than full, but that's just personal opinion. But I think, you know, it sounds like people want minimal regulation here and I, and I, I don't see an issue with that.
That, that coverage serves best for areas like downtown because the whole reason why we have that is to be able to see in and out of a business. Not only is it promoting safety, but it's also promoting business because most of us will go into a business if we see more people in there. If there isn't anybody in there, we, we have a second thought about whether we're going to go in or not.
And I think that's why I lean towards partial coverage because, two reasons. One is that so that you can see in and out of a business, and I think that does help the business. The other part is it just looks less, I mean, there's less clutter, there's less going on. So those are the two reasons I would, I would lean more to partial, but I think less regulation is sounding like what people want.
And I'm for the partial coverage and I guess for a little bit different reason, right? Something's going on there, police want to see in, fire wants to see in. If they can see in without breaking the window out, it's all the better. So it, it becomes, it truly becomes a huge safety issue and, and a benefit for the business. I mean, if they look at it and go, "Well, you know, I, I really want this," in the end, if something bad is going on in there, you want to have, be able to have eyes from the outside in, right? So.
All right. Ground signs, we'll talk about pole and monument signs right now. In our mixed-use zone, our residential, commercial, professional zone, RCP, pole signs are not permitted currently. Ground signs can be six feet tall and thirty-two square feet in the copy area and five-foot setbacks. In commercial zones, we follow this formula that gives them their signed square footage allowance. It's two times the building frontage plus one times the open space frontage. So many businesses can have up to two hundred square feet, three hundred square feet, some even get up to a thousand square feet depending on the business. And so it just gives them the preference to, to kind of change their, or have a bigger sign for the bigger facade that they have or whatnot. But that's our current, current regulations on pole signs and grounds within commercial districts, but also the max height that they can have it is thirty feet.
We got a question from Councilmember Mangan.
If you're not dealing with this point, you can keep moving.
That's the current regulations.
What's your recommendation?
Based off the sign preference, pole signs are not desired, but monument signs are desired. We can change, treat those differently as different sign types. And for regulations, the, the overwhelming majority is neutral. They don't, they don't see that it needs to be prohibited throughout town, but they also don't see that it should be without any regulations.
So what we have, is it working?
Personally, I'll show you, go back to mine. I don't think that works. That's up to interpretation and you guys to, to, as well. But personally, I think expect along Yellowstone, it is pretty cluttered. A lot of these signs are meeting their current standards. I think the, my biggest problem with, with the, how it's been regulated. how it's been regulated is the sign allowance. How they do that with the two times the business frontage plus the one open frontage. It's massive amount of sign preference or sign allowance. Something that we've also, part of the quali- quant- qualitative research that came out of this was they, they think that pole signs, they, they especially along Yellowstone are like hiding each other. And so it's good, it's not even benefiting. And where pole signs and bigger signs are trying to detract from, or get people off the streets and kind of change their behavior to go to the business, residents really like the signs that are more, they announce when you arrive, you're, you're here to the business and you know you're at the right spot after you've already made your informed decision of going to that area.
Which is more of a monument sign.
Yeah, more of a monument sign. Or a wall sign even. So I've seen, I've seen lots of regulations with these formulas, but I've never seen in my research something as much as what we currently allow for, for these type of signs.
Okay, Linda and then Josh.
I agree with, you know, I mean, you showed that photo and said, in your opinion, that's not really working and I agree with that. One of the things you notice when you're driving down Yellowstone is there are so many signs in front of each other that you really can't see them. Sometimes even billboards in the mix and stuff and it just, it just ends up being a lot of clutter. But it raised an interesting question when you showed that picture. The complication of developing a whole new sign code and the issue of like grandfathering, so all those businesses that have those signs, what's the policy there? Are we, are we going to make people change the signs they have? Or is it just new businesses can't put up a sign, but old ones, I mean, existing ones can keep their signs? And then there's this issue of fairness in terms of they get advertising that new businesses don't or that can become a very complicated issue. So I was wondering if you're going to
Yeah.
Talk about that at all.
We're working on, or we're looking at our legal non-conforming section of this code. Currently, right now, it's pretty strong for us to say, like, if there's any change in sign of it, they have to meet full code, what we currently have.
Very, very hard to enforce.
Very hard to enforce.
I mean, you can make, all the way down Yellowstone, make all those people tear them out?
Exactly. It's based off businesses, it's based off the sign. How we've currently been enforcing our legal non-conforming is if you make a change to that sign, it needs to come into current. You can keep the, keep how it currently is, but once you make any change to it, then it has to come into compliance with their current code.
So, sorry.
I've got, uh, yeah, well.
Joshua. Go ahead and lay it, go ahead.
Well, I'm ju- I'm just, I just look at it and say, I, I understand that, but how long do you leave a sign up, right? If you leave that sign up for 40 years and he goes, I'm not taking it down and it looks terrible, you know, do we, are you going to write something into the code that, and I don't even know how you would do that? Right? Or do we look at something if we decide to change all this, that you have 10 years? Right? In the next 10 years, your business, it's not going to hit you today, it's not going to hit you tomorrow, but within 10 years of this date, you have to conform to these, our, our codes, which to me would be the smartest way to do it versus.
Next time.
You're just gonna, you're just gonna leave it up there until, because some people aren't going to move it, right?
Right. And I guess to go off that, it's not just if they make a change to the sign as well, it's, so if they change the sign to a new business or a new owner, typically that's when it would kick in as well. The process you're talking about sounds similar to the amortization process, which is you give them 10 years or three years to take down the signs to, to phase them out. We talked with Legal about that and they said it sounded more, in the state of Idaho, it sounded like it would be a taking and we'd have to pay for, to pay each sign to do that.
Oh.
So we looked into that, it was actually called for a lot in our code, but the feasibility with Idaho State Code and us paying them to take it down, it seemed like a big ask, so I didn't even put it onto the, the, the scale.
All right. Okay.
Josh?
I'm assuming you're going to go to the next section of like the, the sliding scale?
Yeah.
Yep. I, I, I know, I've known that this sign code was going to come up for a while now. We've gotten, got mentioned a couple of months ago and since then, I, I've done a lot of traveling for work and other things and just driven similar to, you know, commercial spaces like Yellowstone and just kind of looked. And I, I couldn't find any road as clutter as Yellowstone. And there are some places that have a fair number of signs, but nothing like I've ever seen in Yellowstone. And, and it kind of drew attention to me of just like how, how much of a visual mess it is right now. And I think that was reflected when 73% of survey respondents said they found it to be visually cluttered. What, what did, what, I mean, you, you mentioned that we have perhaps one of the lar- allow for the largest signs. Do you think the size of the signs are what create that? Or, or what are other comparable codes you've seen on commercial spaces and corridors like Yellowstone? Are there cities that just straight prohibit pole signs? And I'm sorry, talking pole signs in specific, is that, is that something that happens pretty regularly?
Yeah. More and more, it's typically, it starts with prohibiting, prohibiting the billboard signs. And then it goes to, well, it's still cluttered, so let's get rid of our pole signs and have shared common, common signage. Really have businesses and complexes that built on there work together. And then that way they still advertise for one another. I, I guess I, I've seen it. It's coming more and more common, but I wouldn't say it's common right now.
In terms of then, on that right side of the scale, what, what are changes do you think that are? It, you know, what are, what, where on the code do you think it, it kind of falls? And some examples of like how we should design this in a way that does minimize that clutter?
I think if we just said maybe one and a half, the business frontage of that, of that business, then they can have, that's their sign allowance and how they choose to utilize that sign allowance is going to show them their, the importance. I think most of the, the businesses are going to say they want to use that on their wall, wall signs to say, yeah, we're actually here. And rather than putting a lot of money into a pole sign that the survey is kind of showing as it hasn't been too effective for them.
It, you know, in that case then, I know others, I'm sure, sure there's, but I, I probably not prohibited, but I'm very strong on the regulation of pole signs. Monuments, I think that they seem to be working fairly well for, for our city right now. But I feel pretty strongly about the, the regulation of pole signs and a means to, if the science code can discourage the use of those pole signs. I'm very, you know, as you've kind of recommended here, I'm very strongly in favor of that.
Corey?
I concur with Josh, I think the monument signs are, they have to be different from the, from the monument, the monument and the pole sign have to be differentiated between in this regard. But I lean right there in that spot where it says require permits, allow only in certain zones. That's kind of where I'm leaning. And then like what Linda had said about the grandfathering and whatnot, I think that allowing in certain zones under specific situations, I think would be appropriate.
Well, I'm, I'm personally interested in knowing how you get rid of these signs. It's taking in the state and, and stuff, how, I mean, we create, I think right now where we are, require permits with regu- regulations, I think is where we are, right in the middle of it. And, and so with that being said, I don't know how you take those away without being a taking and that's been a, a concern that, that we've had in the past. And I guess that might be more of a Jared question to figure that out. I don't necessarily need an answer right now, I don't think, but as we're building this, I think that that's something that we're going to have to understand is can we take them away? What is the best way to remove them? Do you give them 10 years? Do you give them, when the sign, the wind blows through in Pocatello once in a while? When it breaks, do they have to replace it? I mean, and then is a city required to pay for it when that happens? I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot of things there that are, that are, that, this is only pole signs, but your monument signs, you know, you have the same issue with monuments. I, I'm looking at this picture you have going down Yellowstone and I personally am thinking, okay, take all those poles off of those, but you have all those signs right on the ground now, it's just as cluttered to me as, as anything else. And so I, I, you know, it's kind of a, there again, that's, yeah, it's like a cemetery, that's right.
With the tombstones.
It's, it's right, but I, I mean, I, this is a, yeah, this is an, an interesting topic for, for us to figure out, but Jared came up here to tell me about removing signs.
Yes, if I may, just take a minute, Mayor and Council, Jared Johnson, City Attorney. I know you didn't ask for a specific answer right now and, and it would take quite a, quite a legal memo to give you a specific answer on some of these issues, but I thought there was a couple of things you should keep in mind as you're having this discussion that might help you as you deliberate towards this new sign code. And that is kind of what's already been discussed. We can't really in any instance take down signs that are already there unless they voluntarily do so. We can't give them a time limit to get the signs down unless the signs become dilapidated, they get blown over by a windstorm, something like that, change ownership, those types of things. They want to change the style of the sign, then we can enforce current regulations. But really, it's important to remember, other than just compensation, paying them for that takings, we can't force after the fact. We, we have to grandfather and that's why we have a whole section of legal non-compliant signs and zoning and structures and everything else, because we changed the rules, but you can't change the past. It's called ex post facto and you can't create ex post facto laws. So keep that in mind as you go forward. But there are a lot of criterias that you can institute the updated compliance measures. And, and I mentioned a lot of those and, and we could probably come up with a few more to add to that list. But to just go in and say, no, those signs are no longer allowed, you have it there, you can't have it there anymore. We, we, in no instance, three years, 10 years, whatever the case may be, can we do that unless some triggering event happens?
Okay, I've got Linda and then, and then Scott.
Okay. Thanks, Jared, for, I, I think the, that whole issue of existing signs is a complicated one that we are going to have to think about and, and there's going to be, we're going to be limited in what we can do. So it's going to take time, I, I think, you know, to see a transition away. But that being said, I, I agree with what Josh, one part of what you said about sort of heavily regulating signs in order to encourage moving away from that type of sign. The, the part I feel a little bit differently about is not just pole signs. To the mayor's point, if you discourage pole signs and say monument signs are great, well, then you're just going to have a new type of clutter because everybody's going to switch from one to the other. So I think both of them, and, and there's also other issues with monument signs that we need to be very cautious about. You know, sometimes people have put them, you know, the sign size may be, and, and style may be perfectly acceptable, but it's blocking the, you know, pedestrian walkway and things like that. So I believe both of these sign types need to be pretty heavily regulated and encouraged, definitely moving away from pole signs, but also, you know, really keep a, a strong eye on, on monument signs that we're not impeding, you know, our bike ped friendly efforts and, and also particularly with people with disabilities and there have been monument signs as well as monument mailboxes, let's call them, put, you know, right in the middle of, of sidewalks where if there's somebody in a wheelchair or a blind person, they're going to walk, you know, not be able to get past that or, or smack right into it or so. So I think there's some very important considerations that these type of signs really do require oversight more than like, let's say, window signs or something like that. So I lean heavily on, on permits and regulations on these signs. But aesthetically, I'd like us to figure out within our legal constraints of, you know, what we already have and not being able to just say people have to change that. So with all that as a given, how do we have a code that encourages us to move in a different direction and, and move away from that clutter?
Well, and, and Scott's got a question, I think, for Legal, but we kind of went through this sign code and billboards for illumination and the sign companies were very involved in them and they all reduced that brightness down.
The lumens, yes.
To, yeah, we know more about lumens than we ever wanted to. They, they brightened, they, they turned that down to the acceptable thing, but you drive down any street at this point that has a illuminated billboard and I can guarantee they're not at the .03 lumens or whatever we said we're supposed to, I mean.
I just saw a new one last night that's extremely bright, so yeah, I, I don't know that we're
It's a nightmare to try to regulate them anyway. Scott?
I don't even know if I want to ask it, there's legally, there's really no way to encourage somebody to do something different. If, if in fact, we had a business license said if you have a pole sign, it costs you X amount of dollars to continue with that sign for the, can't do that, right?
No, you're punishing them for.
That's a great idea though, isn't it?
Wonderful.
Oh my gosh, listen to this.
That's why I didn't want to ask it.
He just wants confirmation.
Very pro property rights and, and the law supports that really strongly.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't, he gets up and moves up here.
There is education, there is, you know, incentives, there's things like that we could look at doing for sure.
Right.
I mean, you can encourage.
Right.
Right.
But to remove and things like that.
It would be interesting to see what the business owners on Yellowstone, right? When, I'm looking at this picture from, I'm guessing it's the 50s of Main Street when you look down that and it's, it's not an ISO, right? The, it's, it's older signage, but they're on the buildings, it's telling you what that building is, but it doesn't look cluttered. And then you go from that to Yellowstone.
A plain devil's advocate, though, look how close they are to the street.
Well, they are, you're right, you're right, there's no upfront parking.
Yeah.
Another option would be, you know, you could waive permit fees for somebody that's willing to take a non-conforming but legal sign.
Incentives.
Yeah, rebates, incentives, waivers of fees, there's lots of things you can do other than enforce something that's already been legal in the past or penalized.
And I was going to bring that same point up is, I think, incentivizing the change of the signs is what we really need to, to look at. I've seen it successful in other communities where you give them some allowances or you give them some waiving of permit fees or other things like that, that gives them some value to make those changes. A lot of companies are willing and understand the importance of, of making that change and the benefit it will have to them if they do it, but they don't want to necessarily fork out the money to do it. And so if you can provide some incentives and have incentive-based change, that is more productive than, than anything. And also requiring changes if they do want to change out the sign. Those sign cabinets only last for so long. They, they were out over a couple of decades and they have to get replaced or upgraded. And so that's your tool and your mechanism to get them changed. And if they do get into disrepair, then you have another tool or mechanism to have those either updated or fixed. So there's, there's ways we can address it, both through forcing change, but incentives are huge in this process.
Carrot versus hammer and it's always better. And the more we can get buy-in from businesses that they want to be part of making us look better, that's a good thing. that's a good thing, rather than like, we're going to force you to do this, I think. So.
Pretty sure.
Corey?
So to move us along, can we see some options for some incentives and some ideas on permits and regulations that we can look at, make an informed decision, and then move it forward from there?
Yeah, we'll, we'll bring forth a legal non-conformant section to incentivize and to, to kind of force the hand as well.
Thank you.
Wall signs, within the residential, commercial, professional zone, you can only have one per street frontage with a 32 square foot copy area. The commercial industrial zones, it falls under that same formula that we were talking about before. The max height of these wall signs are the height of the building. Wall signs are favorable, like there's no, like they're the most preferred and they're the, like 77% of, 77, 72 and a half percent of people like these, while only 8% say that they're not preferred. I think that's strong that they're, they're the type of sign that we want to encourage and we want to see moving forward with the preferred sign regulation. A lot, the majority of them say that it's neutral, but the lease regulation is pretty close to, to, to both of those. And so I currently think it's working if we start, if we reduce the sign allowance that we talked about in the previous regulations.
Corey?
No.
And then, I'm sorry, Josh, I didn't see you there.
We're looking at.
And then Josh.
We're looking at the, the wall signs. I agree with your point on the wall signs. And aesthetically, that they do look a lot better. But again, playing devil's advocate, driving down Yellowstone, the businesses and the buildings are so far off of the street that it's kind of difficult to see where the business is or what business you're coming to. So having that sign out front does lend to the business's marketing ability. So having something that would kind of lend to the business's benefit would really be helpful in this. Because it'd be kind of hard to just be like, you can only have a wall sign, but I can't see the wall sign unless I'm, you know, five feet from, from your building. So to that point, is there anything that you guys would suggest that would be beneficial there?
Common signage has been, that way you can reduce the amount of pole signs or monument signs, but you bring them all into one area, especially if it's for a block. Our blocks aren't that big. So you could say, here's the common signage, and then you have your businesses with your wall signs. I think if we incentivize common signage, it would help with reduce the clutter, but it would also give the businesses and drivers the opportunity to see where they're, they're at.
Common sign's more of a pole or a monument type sign.
That's correct. You could talk about how if it's a common signage for the block or for several businesses, then you could potentially get a little bit more, more square footage allowance for that. Or it could be, there, there's certain things we could do to incentivize and allow that common signage without incentivizing for the monument or the pole sign.
Josh?
Yeah, two questions. Number one, do you require to have a permit right now for wall signs?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I, I personally, on the scale, feel like it's been a pretty appropriate level of regulation. I guess the second question I have then is, do you, on this, the wall signs with the, the square footage allowance, when you're kind of building the total signage allowance for a building, is that going to be a function of the facade and the frontage still?
Yep, it's this, so it's the same allowance that, so wall signs for wall projecting, monument poles, window signs, they all are based off of this, this allowance of two, two times the building frontage, one times the open space frontage. And that's the max they can have for their site or business. And, and so they can choose how they want to distribute it. And right now, currently, because it's pretty big, a lot of the owners are using it as sign, pole, monument signage.
So you're, so, so right now, that's how that functions is, is in that code? So you're looking then at decreasing the amount of size or decreasing the total size that's permitted in signage?
That's one, one way. If, if we, if we all agree that it's, if Yellowstone's cluttered, it's not working, that's one way to reduce that clutter.
Okay.
And it's just something we'd have to look into to see what's appropriate for that area to, to not be burdensome, but also to be, to make the corridor or districts or whatever a more pleasant experience.
So this, I don't, I mean, I'm happy to hear feedback, I guess. But rather than, you know, I, I think what we may consider doing, when I see this, and I know we'll get to billboards in a second, but from what we've seen so far, taking the public's desirability around certain signs. If you have your total allotment, whatever that is, and then creating multipliers that say, so for example, if they have a common sign that's, that's part of, you know, the block sign, then that is their square footage, but it's at a half multiplier. So it's cut in half of what the actual impact is towards the business. If they do a pole sign, it's 1.5 square footage, right? And that, but I don't know if that's something that's feasible. I want to incentivize people to use their signage on these kind of things, right? And, and without, looks like I'm about to get told no.
Way to go, Josh.
You got him back up here.
You know, Jared didn't come running over this time, so that's, I'm, I'm making steps.
I'm not telling you no, I'm just throwing out things I've done in the past that I would like to see.
Okay.
So currently, you know, what I would like to actually see is the wall signs and the pole signs actually get separated.
Okay.
From their allotment. And you get, let's say, if your wall sign is based off your elevation, square footage, and your pole sign is based off your street square footage. And so a, a larger complex with more street frontage gets a bigger sign than a smaller complex has less square footage. Now, the, the advantage to that is someone can't take all their, their, their wall square footage and throw it into their pole sign. And so you're actually separating those two types of signs and have the qualifications for the size of those separated. So there's no connection to them at all.
That, that sounds great to me.
And I was actually going to suggest that as well as, the window signs should have their own square footage allowance, 50% of the window or whatever, we agree with that. And each sign type should have its own, own square footage allotment, rather than saying it's this, you know, as long as it meets in the total, it shouldn't be a combination of things, it should be individual.
Great. Corey and then Scott.
I'm good. Corey's good, Scott?
Perfect. Addresses, we don't, I mean, here's the whole thing, right? Everybody uses their phone to go somewhere, right? So those signs are advertisement, they're not, here's where my business is. It's advertisement, that's what we're looking at is advertisement. Because if it says, turn here, right? I need an address on the bill, all I need is an address. And when I turn in that parking lot, that's the business, right? Your destination is on the left. So when I look at that, I think we lack in this city, address-wise, right? And that's not you, I don't know who it is, but that's something that, that we need to push. You know, you want your address visible, because that's, that's where I'm coming to. The sign thing, I guess I never really paid attention because when you grow up in a town and you know where everything's at, you're not, you're not paying attention to it, right? But when you're in a different town looking for something, then sometimes you're, you're looking for that or I'm living off my phone more than anything, so.
So I agree with that. However, though, when you're going somewhere out of town, that sign does help, right? Because the phone might tell me to turn right, but I've missed the turn because I don't see the sign. So the sign is tremendously beneficial for people who are traveling. For us who live here, it's like, we know, turn left, turn right.
Do we want that big pole sign or do we want something else?
True, that's where it's.
I gotta, I gotta, I gotta be in the area. I don't know how you fix it. It's like Linda, Linda said, it's gonna, it's, this thing's going to be long-term when you look at it. It's not tomorrow, everybody gets their signs now.
Quick fix, yeah.
But I think we need to go in that direction. We need, this, this is a conversation we need to be having.
And that was a big reason why we asked the question of how do you, how do you decide to visit a business? Is we, we, we finding that the signs, they play a role, but they're not as big of a role as what, what individual businesses or sign companies want us to think.
So this portion of, of the ordinance, is it broken in your opinion?
So.
Wall sign piece.
We're gonna, we're gonna fix it a little bit. I think it's working overall, but we're gonna try and fix it based off what I've heard. We, we're probably gonna separate them off into it and then reduce the, the sign allowance and just base it off the, the business furniture.
But this is one of the least broken.
Yes.
So here, here's a question. So for the group that monitors like tourism and stuff here in Pocatello, have you guys talked to them about any of the marketing and the signs and stuff like that? Because people who travel and visit Pocatello, are they, how impacted are they with shopping and tourism and things of that nature when we do these different things, regulating signs?
We, we haven't had those discussions yet. That's something we can look into and we'll reach out to them for that, though.
And regardless, we still want to maintain a good aesthetic. And we do want to beautify our city. But I think that it would be beneficial to figure out from a tourism perspective what people are seeing and what the, the census is in that regard.
Yeah, I completely agree, and we'll do that. All right. So here's where it gets a little bit more intense, at least my opinion.
Oh, here's the fun part.
Tear him all down.
Off-premises billboards. Right now, there's a process, a pretty lengthy process to go through to get a billboard approved. They're only permitted in certain zones of office park, light industrial, industrial and commercial general. So they, first off, they have to meet our regulations. But then, once they meet the regulations, and I'll get, go through those regulations after this, they have to go through mailing, they have to mail all the tenants and owners within a 500-foot radius. Then those tenants or owners can request a public, or a public hearing before the hearing examiner. And then it'll be up to the hearing examiner to see if it makes sense in this area. The maximum square feet for one of the billboards is 300 square feet. It can be 12, up to 12 feet high, or yeah, 12 feet high and 36 feet long. It must meet all the current zoning setbacks. Overall, the height can't be more than 35 feet above the ground level and must have a minimum of a 20-foot clearance below the bottom. And spacing requirements, if it's on the same side of the roadway, it's 1,000 feet. If it's on the opposite side of that roadway, it's 150 feet. Something that we've talked about is making that into more of a radius, a thousand-foot radius. There's several things that we could do to, to do that, to look at that. And then also additional, it cannot be located within 250 feet of a residential zoning district, residential, commercial, professional zone, a designated historic district, park, school, church or cemetery in any direction. Off-premise billboard signs by far were the least preferred sign. 69% of them were, said least preferred, with a vast majority of that being the furthest least preferred. The most regulations, these were the second highest rate, preferred level of regulations. When going through the comments, there was several calls for ban, amortization that we already discussed can't do. But these by far were the, these and then the next section will be the, by far the most heavily regulated preferred signage types.
Corey?
I would suggest that we continue to regulate these and allow them in certain zones, kind of like we have it set up now. But my question is, and this might be a question for legal, I'm not sure, but can we specify a specific number of billboards that we will allow within city limits? And at that point, there's a cutoff and nobody else can get any more of these signs? Or like, because they are kind of an eyesore in certain areas and, you know, the people are saying that they're not necessarily for them, so.
Yeah, I, I'm, without looking into it, I'm not sure the answer, I don't know. Legal knows yet.
Our lawyer's not paying attention.
Could you just end them?
So, so we do have some, some regulation on, on it. There is a, a number of how many you can have, but it's all based on footage within the city right now. And so if I remember right, the last time we went through this and, and sign code and billboards were the, the top, as far as 1,000 feet goes from each other, it was like three, two or three more would fit within the city. But when you cross the street, you can add, I want to say seven or eight more or something like that. So if I remember right, the, you're right around a dozen-ish more throughout the city right now that
That can be.
That, that can be put in there. I'm interested in making an area of the city that it's, that you can't put them in because there's none, none right now, but we've annexed this property. I would like to see us say no more because we have a dozen now, but we've annexed some property that would actually add another dozen if we wanted to, if somebody wanted to push it in.
That was the point that I was trying to get at.
I would rather not, I would rather say no more moving forward, but then we've got some regulations right now that are.
Windfalls has set precedent, they went through the Supreme Court of Idaho and it's been upheld. They banned billboards throughout the city, which was kind of ironic at some points that were brought up in the qualitative side of this survey. They said, why can't we be more like Twin Falls where they wanted more lease, less regulations? But, I mean, yeah, anyways.
No, go ahead, no.
I, I might be echoing something that I think I heard Scott say. I, number one, from a marketing standpoint, billboards are not nearly as effective as people, as the owners of billboards want you to believe. As access to social media, internet and other opportunities for marketing exist, it's more affordable than ever before for small businesses, especially to market. There is, if you're on your phone, there is geo-tagging. So they can put a specific, like, for example, if you drive down Main Street, a Main Street business can tag your phone if you drove, drive down that, and then your ads will be targeted. And they'll, you'll see those ads that they pay for. It's geographic, it's more demographic targeting, it is cheaper than billboards. And so I would feel no reservations about prohibiting billboards inside the city of Pocatello moving forward.
That, that was my question, can we just say no more? I mean, we, we, we have enough. I just, I don't know that I really look at them in town. You see them on the interstate because they're so big when you're coming down the interstate, and it's the same thing. My problem with them is, is they'll, I don't know how they do it, they pay for a month, then nobody buys up the billboard, and the same thing stays there and just fades away for six or eight months. And it looks bad. I would just as soon say no more in the city, we're maxed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just to bring up the other side here, know that if we say that, because we did put a, a temporary moratorium on billboards while we were considering the last round of changes to the sign code. And there is going to be a huge pushback from sign companies because what you're doing is effectively ending their business. So it's just something to keep in mind, if, if businesses can't grow and do anymore, then what, what happens to them? So, you know, I understand what you're saying about there's new and different types of marketing and everything, but then are we making ordinances that, that give an advantage to certain types of business and, and really damage other types of business? So we, we will hear from, I mean, there was a huge outcry from billboards, I mean, from sign companies, the last two rounds of changes to the sign code. So be prepared. So be prepared.
I, I might just add on to that, because if you know Linda, that hurts Linda to say. However, there is two things that are gonna make people excited in our community and they're gonna turn out like you've never seen before. One of them is dogs. You pick on my pet, we're gonna turn out and we're gonna fill this place full.
Tussle.
We're gonna have people out in the parking lot and stuff like that. And you want to double those people signs. And so I'm, I, I noticed that Brent left because he probably heard people coming. Because it is, it is something that literally, I mean, Linda's right. It's easy for us today to sit up here and go, yeah, we should do this, we should do that, this is not, I want to see that and I want to see that. And Will, I don't know if you've ever gone through a sign code rewrite or any of that stuff in your career.
It's the most difficult thing.
So he's not ever gone through it and Will's gonna get his butt kicked a number of times going through this. And it's, it, this will be probably the most difficult thing the council has to deal with, because.
It's people's livelihoods.
People's livelihoods and it's advertising and it's this and it's that and all the things that we've talked about. I, I can guarantee you, this is going to be extremely diff. We went on two different tours with sign companies and stuff on the last one. It's, it's, it's difficult. I'm just gonna prepare you. I just want you to be prepared that. I'm not looking forward to this ride, because it's not a fun one. Josh?
I, I think a couple, a couple of things and I, when I announced my campaign in November of 21, the first thing someone asked me is how do I feel about signs? Like, day one, someone's like, how do you feel about signs? And I'm like, I don't even know what you're talking about. Like, because I was, I wasn't even in Pocatello the last time we addressed this. And so I, I, I've kind of known about this and known about the contentious issue. And I, I think that, number one, the billboards that already exist, I think I would be, I would be willing to see more of a grandfathering in and allowing updates, right, prepares, not pulling those down and the same way about poll signs and giving them those opportunities. Because I don't want to just strip that kind of income that already exists. But it's not like we're seeing billboards go up left and right and I know that there's going to be that, that movement, but we have a survey. Well, and they can't, right, right, right. There are limitations, that's my point. So, so a ban moving forward is not as, it's, I just don't think it's as damaging as we're gonna hear, though we will hear it. And I guess the other point though is we've got a survey of 350 citizens, of whom a quarter of them are business, business folks. And 75% of them who say these are the worst types of signs that they don't want to see, they don't want to be a part of their city. And I guarantee when it comes time to it, those aren't gonna be the ones sitting in those chairs. They're not gonna be the loudest ones. But, and I, I didn't go through it the first time, so I can't speak to those who did. The many times, yeah, the many times. But I, I have yet to hear a good thing about a billboard from somebody who's just a citizen. And that's something that I think we have to take into consideration.
Well, we, we did hear that the last time and that was taken into consideration.
Well, I know, but.
And so there was compromises made and that's what ultimately is gonna happen, is they're gonna come to us with a sign code. We're gonna hear, there are gonna be compromises and the sign code will be done. And then in a few years, we'll do it again. And that's just kind of the lifespan of sign codes, I guess. I, I don't know, but.
I do have a question, if I may, and I think it was you that, Will, that said that Twin banned billboards outright in the city. And again, back to the issue of signs that are already existing. You mentioned something about, or somebody mentioned something about pulling signs down. What did Twin do with their ban? Because doesn't pulling signs down go back to taking?
It's a grandfathered.
So they, they're all grandfathered in. I believe they're only down to one or two now. But it, it was just a ban on new signs and they continued with their legal non-conforming section. And now they're almost free of those billboards.
Okay, so it did, it moved them in the direction they wanted to go. Did that happen? Any idea about how fast?
Not fast.
That happened? It was not fast?
I believe the ordinance, if I remember correctly, was petitioned in the early 90s.
Oh.
So it wasn't, it's, it's not.
It's not anytime recent?
No.
So, so it took them quite a while?
And, and Twin Falls did go to court over it.
Right. But you said the Supreme Court upheld that.
Yes, that's correct. So we, we have legal precedent that it is, it is okay to do. It's just, do we want to?
Right, right.
So I, I think to not allow any more is very easily done. I say easily, that's not true. It's not gonna be.
It's not easy.
But it's, it's easier. I mean, you look at Chubik and they don't allow them in Chubik billboards. They like allow signage, but billboards they, they don't allow. And so I think in some of the areas or the areas that we've annexed into the city of Pocatello and moving forward, any annexed areas, I think it's, I think you could probably prohibit those there. And then I think it's the twin, if, if you're gonna do something, it sounds like the Twin Falls motto and, and you do it and, you know, 50 years down the road, then you're gonna see them eliminated. But it's, it's gonna be a 50-year process.
Yeah, it's a long-range process. It's not a year, five-year, 10-year thing.
But to, to the point of Twin Falls, I mean, today, Twin Falls is the city that everybody says, look at Twin Falls downtown and the work that they've done to make their city beautiful and to make it aesthetic. And, and, you know, is, what is it, the old George Washington saying? Best time to tear down a billboard is 20 years ago and the next best time is today?
I don't think he talked about a billboard.
I'm pretty sure that's what I remember.
I think it was a tree.
Oh, yeah, 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 tree, billboard trees.
Yeah, yeah. Best day to plant a tree was 20 years ago, but.
The one in my office says billboard. I, I think you're wrong on that. George Washington definitely talked about it.
They have, they have.
But, but that's the point, right? It is long-range. It is, but as we try and make those, those hard decisions, I think we will reap the benefits and maybe it's in decades, but I think it's a worthwhile process.
Wasn't it all for Wendell Holmes?
Possibly, I don't know.
So from what I'm hearing, his direction is you want to see how we can prohibit the billboards and.
Well, we've, we've got councilmen in our Shen.
Really, all I want to say is, I'm not, I'm not afraid of this. I mean, I look at it, if we're gonna, if somebody wanted to put up a billboard, we're gonna go through a public hearing and whatever.
Oh, you will.
Either, either way, you know what I'm saying? If we left it the way it was and somebody's putting it up and somebody's going, I don't want it there, we're going through the same battles. As a council, I'm, all I can do is, is give you my end of how impressed I am with this council and the way they, the way we've tried to work to a common goal and we start to look at things and go, really, all we're trying to do is make the city better, right? We're not trying to hurt anybody. We're not trying to put people out of business. We were trying to put the sign companies, the billboard companies out of business. We'd say, this is what we're doing. We're not putting any more up and we want you to take yours down. We don't want your advertisement here. It's, it's there. We understand that it's grandfathered. We just want to try to move in a different direction and, and clean it up and it, and that's my view of it. We, we want to see a cleaner streamlined community. And, and I think we're working, we're working that way. It, it won't be pretty and I feel sorry for you when I look at it. But part of it is for you, is you can say, they gave me the direction. I'll take the heat. I'm not afraid to take the heat. This is, this is a little bit of heat in my life. I, it's, it's not, it's, it's, you're, I appreciate what you're doing and, and I know it's gonna be tough on you, but. I just say, I, I don't need another billboard.
So ban the billboards, keep the puppies. Ban the billboards, keep the puppies.
Sounds good. Alright.
One, I would just add to that real quickly. I, I would definitely, I, I mean, it, it is gonna be a fight. I would love to see us go in that direction. But to the mayor's point of the annexed areas, I think that's a, a very good place to start, where we're not adding them into new areas that don't have them already. Let's keep those clean and not even get started down that road. The part where it's already there, it's gonna be a lot more difficult and take a lot longer, but we can start down the right road with, with those newer, cleaner areas.
The reality, when you put one up, you're 50 years.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a 50-year life cycle, so. Anyway, go ahead, Will.
Alright. Electronic message displays, EMDs. This one, a little bit, so typically electronic message, so electronic message displays can be either a wall sign, it can be a pole sign, it can be a monument sign, it can be a billboard. So it's just based off it, if it's electronic, then they have to follow by our electronic message display criteria in addition to those other regulations that we have.
Will, can it be on a vehicle?
We don't regulate those ones.
We don't regulate those.
The way it's pointed, it can't, because it's illuminating different colored lights, right? You can, you can only have the white light to the front. You couldn't have.
No, there's billboards, like a truck billboard.
We have, we have vehicles with signs on them and it's on the side of.
Electronic sign?
Yes.
Facing forward?
But, on the side.
On the side. And it was, there was a loophole in the code for that.
And there still is. And, and so, I mean, I guess, I guess, where do you draw the line on, on electric signs? For one, and then for two, would that also include the Pizza Hut delivery guy on top of his car and, and the taxi that's driving down the road? Not, not that we have a lot of taxis necessarily, but.
I think it's covered the traffic code.
We don't regulate those, correct?
Anything on a vehicle, we don't regulate.
Now, those ones that are on the vehicle that we're talking about, like the big sign on the side of the cars, typically those are parked, right? They're not driving around with them.
I've seen them both. I've seen them parked and then I've seen them driving around.
Okay.
Really? I haven't seen them.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Now, the Pizza Hut one, I, I understand.
It showed up right after the sign code with, you can't have it so much illuminated, but it was bright along the side of the car.
It showed up on trucks.
I think it's covered the traffic code, but I'd have to look.
So anyway, there's, there's that, so.
So we allow for the electronic reader boards to be 50 square feet with no more than 50% of the total allowance site area. This was, I've never dealt with an electronic reader board, so this was something that I was made aware of by a sign contractor the last week. So electronic readers and electronic message displays, they have to be static and they can't have movement unless it, unless the message is bigger than the reader board, then it can evenly scroll. They can't have any type of animate, animation or a bling is going up or, or whatever it may be. The automated change of message or image must be accomplished within two seconds and it must be displayed for eight seconds minimum. A one per business, unless located in a business center, then it's one per business center. All electronic message displays shall be installed with automated dimmer control to comply with the .3-foot candles above ambient light, so it has to be that above whatever the current light situation is, whether it's night or dark or light. And it's allowed for schools in all zones. Otherwise, in residential, commercial, professional zones, it, it can only be illuminated or it cannot be illuminated between 9:30 PM and 6:30 AM. So they have a curfew on there to mitigate those, the brightness into residences. These, and admittedly, when people think of electronic message displays, they think of electronic message displays on a billboard. The complaints we, we got with the sign code and the code enforcement complaints are all, most of the code enforcement complaints are on electronic message displays and the brightness with it. Because of traffic safety, they play a role in the radar system for our lights or the lack of radar system for the lights, the current light system for the traffic lights. It plays, if it's too close to one of those, then it plays, messes with that function and blinds the cameras. They blind, a couple scouts earlier contacted our office saying that they're starting to drive and the electronic message displays blind them and they felt it was pretty dangerous and was hindering their safety. One thing to note is with these automated dimmers, sometimes the software resets and the company doesn't recognize that and they think it just, they're like, well, it was working, but sometimes for whatever reason it resets and it gets into brighter and it doesn't have that dimming setting anymore. But they should all be installed with them.
Will, the drivers that are saying they're being blinded, they're, are they talking more of the monument signs or?
They were talking more of the billboard signs, the ones on Yellowstone and on Oak. Those were the main ones. They have since been fixed, so they haven't been complained about since. But when I drive home every day, I get blinded by a monument sign that I have meaning to, to call.
First of all, I just want to say, that's a great memory to remember. It was a three. Still, that, because I had forgotten that, but that being said, it doesn't happen. It, it just, they dim them and maybe they get reset, maybe they get who knows what happens. It just is difficult. But Linda and then Josh and, okay.
I just wanted to say, all those requirements that you just read were the latest thing that we changed. All that was new in the last time that we reviewed the sign. But these EMDs have been one of the bigger problems in terms of enforcement of, of brightness and also some motion issues. And, and maybe it's an issue of, of signs, like software resetting or whatever. But signs, when, there have been times when there, when a new sign goes up where it's way too bright and we have to talk to them and, and get them to tone that down. But there have also been issues where it started out or, or we talked to them and they, you know, made it within what it was supposed to be. And then slowly but surely, it changes and gets brighter and brighter. There's a number of non-billboard EMDs, but like wall EMDs in, on Yellowstone, but not that corridor that you were showing more in the, like around the courthouse, like that end of Yellowstone, like on, on Fourth and Fifth, that are incredibly bright. And it just, you know, I see those at night and I think, you know, that can't possibly be within our required brightness. There's also been issues with, and I'm sure the sign owner feels like it's not movement or animation, yet you have an image that is changing very quickly. And so it has the same effect as a moving image, because it's, it's changing quickly, so it looks like it's moving, even though it's not technically a moving image. So there are some issues with that as well, that even though we have these regulations that we put in place, there are signs that are still kind of problematic in terms of complying with those. And, and maybe technically they are, but it doesn't, you know, for drivers or walkers, it doesn't feel like they are.
Yeah, and these are all, like this, this section is the bulk of our code enforcement case as it related to signs.
And most of these regulations, the sign companies actually came up with and helped us with it. So I think.
Yeah, they did.
In some cases, you just have people with new signs and they may not know.
And they don't know.
But the sign companies really did come to the table and help.
They're the ones who helped develop all these, you know, foot. They're the ones who helped develop all these, you know, foot candles and lumens and.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
And, but, so they were there, but anyway. Josh?
Well, and that's, I think the regulations here are, um, detailed and obviously I know we're the result of a lot of hard work. I, I don't think anyone here is gonna say we should regulate those less, but I guess the question is, are there significant changes that you see or foresee coming in the sign code specific to EMDs?
The biggest, like I said, the most, uh, that we get complaints are, are the billboards. If there's no more billboards allowed, then we're not gonna really see these, um, get, we're not gonna see any more complaints, I guess, or more, more signs to complain about.
But what if they're not billboards?
If they're not billboards, we, a lot of people don't complain about them. Like, we, we, we just won't be, like, we will have to enforce them, but we just don't get that much complaints.
Cause a lot of the wall ones or monument ones are.
The ones, the ones that are bothering me are the ones right in my eye that.
Right. And we have gotten complaints about those, but they're not billboards.
I, I guess I haven't dealt with much of those and if, if we want to increase these standards, that would be the only hesitation moving forward is if we didn't have the, uh, billboards.
I, I don't really have a lot to contribute on this.
Councilmember Marsha?
Well, I just, that was my question. I mean, if we don't have billboards, we don't have to worry about that, but you look, there's one at Flandreau and Yellowstone that's as big as a billboard. It's not a billboard, it's a pole sign, but it's every bit as big as a billboard. So do we.
The electronic one at Flandreau in front of Courtesy?
Yeah.
That is a billboard.
Is it a billboard? Okay. I thought that was just like a pole sign, but it's, that thing's huge, so.
So what about like boards? What about like the boards you see at like, there are certain banks that'll have like, it's rotating, our current rate is whatever. Does that fall within this category? Cause they're not necessarily, I don't, I see a few, but I don't see them necessarily as bright as what we're discussing here and it's not as intrusive, right? And maybe it's because the lighting is dimmed or I, I don't know, but, um, it's, I think it's hard because on, on the point that, that you made about the billboard and the one you're talking about at Flandreau, big, it's bright, kind of obnoxious, but, so there's kind of a difference there, right? And I don't know exactly how we differentiate between the two. It's, it falls within the same category, but, am I making sense? They, they kinda come off a little different.
Trying to figure out what you, how you, how you combine all this together. That's, you're seeing, this is the, the issues that we had.
Cause there are different types of.
There are different types.
Do you regulate the times that, I mean, does, does that change something if, I mean, we talk about six in the morning till nine at night or whatever, if you, there's not a ton of traffic, right? Not tons of traffic from nine to six in the morning. There's only, but is that, is that become a, another, a whole different issue?
See, that, that's what I, why I said, these regulations that we have are really truly drawn up by the people that own the billboards and, and stuff. And I, I know that there's a couple of billboards that are out of whack with the lighting and stuff like that, but a lot of the billboards, they're, they fit within these regulations and they watch them pretty closely. And so they, they do comply. I mean, they helped us put them together and they do comply and some of them don't. But the ones that I recognize that don't are not the billboards as much as they are the.
Smaller signs.
The monument signs and the wall signs. And so it's interesting to hear Will say, I don't hear anything about them. I, I hear about the others and so.
But would you hear about them if they were lined up all the way down Yellowstone like the signs are now? Right? If all those pole signs came down and it turned into all electronic signs all the way down, people are gonna go. And, and maybe not.
Well, I think that, I think, I think that you would. I, it, it's, it's interesting because there are some of the billboards when I, I speak and I can almost guarantee I could name which ones Will has had complaints about, but, but the, um, for the most part, the billboards, the lit, the EMD billboards are, and I'm talking billboards. I'm not talking.
Right.
The other signs. The other signs seem, that's where we seem to have the problem is the animation is on the, the smaller signs.
Those are the, yeah, I was talking about the wall EMDs. And I, that's where I've seen more of the brightness and the movement issues on those. But the, as you say, the, most of the billboards, they helped us develop these standards and they're in compliance for the most part.
We, we have, we regulate them and they have to have a permit and we regulate them pretty heavily.
Yep.
I, I don't think personally I would regulate them more heavily than they are. Part of the issue is, is we are at work from eight to five and it's only dark after five for about three weeks out of the year and.
That's when we hear about the electronic messages.
Yeah. So do we regulate the, the small ones that you're talking about on these businesses?
They're all supposed to, if they're an EMD, they're all supposed to be regulated that way.
But are they, I guess?
Yeah.
They, they are. They are. It's, it's difficult. They, I mean, he's mentioned, Will's mentioned a number of times, regulation on these things and, or, uh, enforcement is extremely difficult. It, it's, it just.
You could have one position just on regulating your signs.
Yeah.
Or enforcing your sign code and probably 50% of it would be EMDs.
Yeah.
So what are we doing to enforce the code?
Currently, it's based off complaints.
Okay, so what are we doing if we have a complaint?
So we get a complaint and it comes to me. I write a letter, I do a site visit and I put track it in our system. And then I go to see the visit, site visit, see what's going on, verify that the complaint's there. Uh, and then once we get a, and then once it's verified, we send a letter of notification letter saying you're out of compliance. Please contact me by this date. We usually give them about two weeks. If they don't contact us, uh, then we issue a citation notice and then we have to start going to code enforcement and the police department to start issuing. We'd have no authority in our department to issue any citation.
For sure.
So Will, real quick, while you're thinking about what you wanted to say there, how many complaints do we receive?
In the.
I mean, is, is it weekly? Is it monthly? Is it once every few months?
When, when winter set in, it was probably three complaints a week on electronic message displays. And the lighter days when people are finishing work, going home and it's still light out, so it's not a big deal. We don't really receive that many sign complaints and, uh, electronic, but for the winter time, I was busy dealing with those and that, and it was not even, uh, signs that I was seeing on my home that I was like, I know that's out of compliance. I just don't have time to, to go without satisfying the complaints first.
Yeah.
Out of, out of the three you got in a week, how many were confirmed?
All of them.
So why don't we change? If we're not changing that, why don't we change the way we address it? I mean, and I have a problem with it, with code enforcement too, this, hey, we go and look at it and it's there. We don't talk to anybody. We send them a letter. We tell them two weeks, they don't answer, so we send them a notice, uh, so we're going months, right? And sometimes, I don't know how we fix it. I'm not saying it's, it's on you, but I, part of it is, is we don't talk to people and that's, that's just our society anymore, right? It's easier to send you a letter and hope you, you look at it instead of knocking on your door and saying, hey, or having somebody knock on the door. And, and I don't know how big busy code enforcement is. I'm sure they're busy, but we knock on the door and say, here's a complaint we have, right? We're, we're making the notification now. We'll be sending you a letter. You have five days to comply and we'll be back. And if not, then we write you a citation. And that, part of it is, is I think, right, most people don't know that there's an issue, right? That, that, that's kind of what we've talked about. It's a change. You're gonna go, I'll get it fixed. But this, I, I'm, I'm telling you, I wouldn't be happy if I, if I called in a complaint and six weeks later, the same thing's going on because we go through this lengthy process that I don't think we need to go through. We need, I think that's something we need to write in, into the.
There's, there's gotta be a way to, to do it because you're right.
It just needs to be.
I mean, it, it's the process that we have right now and, and if, if we picked up the phone, most of these EMDs are either a company owns them or the sign company, you pick up the phone and say, hey, your signs are out of compliance. I'm gonna send you a letter and if I don't see it fixed in a week, I'm gonna send you another letter with a ticket in it.
And I think that makes it, more, more people are gonna be happy.
Their hands are tied right now and, and code enforcement's hands are tied right now to where, to how it's been, you know, the, the process is. And so that's, that's another.
We need to fix that.
Another thing we, we, we could fix, so.
Um, I did just wanna comment on that though, cause, and this was, uh, I think from our police department dealing with code enforcement. But one of the last times we made some changes to that and they made a presentation to us, the, it, the focus was on doing exactly what you're talking about, that we would start with conversations with people and, you know, explain to them what the violation is and how can we help you fix it? And, and not start with a letter or a citation or a, you know, or a threat or whatever, that it, that it was trying to work with people and have those conversations. So I think that our staff are, you know, as much as they can within our codes, approaching it that way. So I did wanna just mention that, but, but I agree with you. I mean, a lot of times it, you're gonna get a better result if, if you start with a conversation and how do we work together to fix this? How can we help you address it as opposed to, you know, sending a letter or citing them or warning them or those kinds of things. But as far as I know, as much as we can, that, that is the approach.
It's a manpower, part of it is, is a manpower issue. I mean, I know you got a lot on your plate versus doing that and, and those are, I guess those are, those are the things we need to look at. How do we streamline it? How do we find the right people to do it, to knock on the door and make that contact? Maybe it's not always you, right? Maybe you can, and, and I know the code enforcement people are busy, but sometimes it might just come down to a phone call where you say, hey, in your travels, right? Could you just stop by this business, knock on the door and say, hey, we have this complaint, blah, 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 blah. And I, you know, and, but maybe code enforcement's looking at me saying, we got enough on our plate. Don't call us. I, that's what I'm saying. We need to find a way. I, I, I don't have the answer.
Right.
We just need to find a way.
Uh, so what I'm hearing is code enforcement needs to be talked about both in regards to electronic message displays. Our regulations, um, are working, but they just need to be followed. Is that right? Okay.
I, I think so.
Yeah, that's, that's my feeling.
I think so.
I mean, I think we got pretty good guidance when we made those changes and.
We did.
The levels were, you know, quite low and the idea of turning them off during certain hours and everything. I think all of that was a, a pretty good compromise. The question is just, is it always happening?
Yeah. No, I think you're, I think you're right. It's gonna be a, a process.
That's concludes, yeah.
On that, so when you meet with code enforcement, let's try to figure out a way to revamp the enforcement of that specific issue. If we can get some ideas on that, that would be great.
I would note, uh, for the look into that.
Yes, sir.
That concludes, uh, our presentation. If you have any additional questions or suggestions or guidance, we'd love to hear that.
Make sure you fix it right this time so we don't ever have to address it again.
I'll do my best.
No pressure.
It's gonna come back regardless, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, counsel? Okay, Will, thank you. You guys and Jim, thank you. You stood there and took a lot of abuse, kind of, but not really. They were mostly questions and, so we appreciate what you're doing and, and, uh, good luck on this one. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, with that then, uh, thank you, counsel. Uh, with that, we are adjourned.